Yeah, good evening. Welcome to the Scioto Township Board of Trustees meeting. Let's bring this meeting to order at which time?
Seven P M.
Seven P M, exactly. First Flintoff, could you call the roll, please?
Sure. Carrie?
Present.
Yeapoe?
Present.
Flintoff, present.
Grant?
Here.
Monk?
Here.
Noel?
Present.
Riser?
Absent.
Also present, Office Coordinator, Kristi Akin, and Township Attorney, Mariah Fink.
And please stand for the Budge of Allegiance. Adoption of the agenda, are there any changes?
I have one change. We're gonna pull off from the consent agenda, the authorization for how the lock and door. We'd like to get a couple of more quotes.
You may have that back.
Uh, I don't know when that will be. Brandon's gonna be scheduling two other companies to come out.
Okay.
And then we'll compare all three.
Any other changes?
Potentially, L one. Possible action paying for payment for attorney services for student to Scioto Township Code two dash four two. I was told that there would be original invoices would be presented, and I don't see those in the packet.
No, I was not told that.
No, I said I was told.
Okay, but I was not, so I have not been submitting them, but I will, and they will be redacted.
Okay, can we consider taking this off till we get a chance to see it?
Sure, I mean.
I've actually already submitted them to our finance manager.
So that's what I said, I was told they were submitted, but they're not in the pack.
You know, I, I think as the person who brought this item, if there's more information, maybe it's just better we just table it. I would propose just abling it if there's more information.
Do you wanna just pull it? Just pull it from the agenda for tonight?
Yeah, excuse me, yeah, pull it for the agenda with the expectation that I'll bring it back January fourteenth. Thanks, Matt.
And when you say, I don't always know the vocabulary, when you say you'll bring it back, who puts it on the agenda?
Um, I proposed this item for the agenda, so where it says prepared by, that's the person kind of submitting.
Okay, okay. So we're, tabling would say, again, would say it has to come back the next time, or?
You're right, excuse me, that's.
Oh, no, I'm just like testing vocabulary.
But that's okay, it's gonna come back the next time, right?
Yeah, but you're right, Judy, that definitely, you can table to a date certain, or, you know, table indefinitely, but usually.
Kind of trying to read my.
Yes, thank you. So yeah, I'll pull this from the agenda.
Okay, okay.
My.
Thank you. One years ago.
I have others, but I, my apologies for walking late. If not done already, I would move to put J one, J three, J four, J five, J six under consent.
Say that again?
J, page two, J one, just approval of the notice of intent to issue bonds to fund the construction of a second fire station. I would move that for consent, as well as J three through J six regarding compensation commission. I think those are good appointments, good process, the staff availability. So I would move those to consent.
I would wanna keep J one, new business, because I think there'll be questions, and our attorney does happen to be here in case there are. Pat McGow. I do have a, and then also for J four, I think which, whichever one is the appointment.
Of staff?
No, the appointment of, I'm sorry, let me pull this up.
Which person?
Jean Pergat, that's number two, or number four, sorry, yeah, J four, I would want to keep on new business.
So I.
And I would do, I would like to keep J six on as new business.
Yeah.
This is my first time going through that.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
We're left with two then, right?
Yeah.
Three and five.
Okay. Are those folks here, though? Are, are J three and J six?
Here.
No, she said you went down.
There's, um, not here. No, none of them are here unless they're online, but I don't.
Okay, only because they like to know if they've been appointed or not.
Oh, yeah, we'll let them know.
Okay. So we pulled, we moved J four to stay, is that correct?
We haven't moved yet. I, I'm proposing to put J one through six without two, but I appreciate that there's not a court on that. So I would move what I could, which it looks like it's three and five, J three and five to consent.
And I'll support that.
That makes sense to me.
We probably could have voted on them, and the amount of time I took through it.
Wait a minute, so it's J, J three and J five to consent?
Yes, please.
Anything else? Your motion to adopt the agenda?
Your document is amended.
I'll support. You'll support, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes? Communications to the Board of Trustees, there was only one, is that correct?
Yeah, plus the one that we received today from the Liberty Athletic Club related to the Blue Line Fitness. And I, was, was Blue Line Fitness somebody who spoke at Planning Commission debate, raise those concerns at that venue as well?
Yes.
I think, Liberty, okay, great.
Intros, and you don't have any?
None of the commissioners, but none, none of the proposed compensation commissioners are here.
No, just.
In person or online? I see Mr. Boyd.
Vice Chair, or the, yeah, but he's not on the agenda.
Right, okay.
Move to public comments. Any, any person, I guess so, John Boyd?
Yes, I happen to be here. I'm John Boyd, South Township, and the previous Chair of the Compensation Commission. And I'm just here to ask the Board to approve the proposed members. Thank you.
Great, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thanks for your service.
Anyone else in person? Y'all, I don't know, okay, anybody online?
Yes, Rob Pattinson, you're up.
Thank you, Rob Pattinson, Scioto Township. In the communications section of the agenda, the second letter is not posted in there, it's still only the one letter from Dave Lutton. And L two tonight, is that going to be closed session?
Oh, yes, we have to back to, yep.
Okay. We went through this at the last meeting, I highly recommend going to the conference room to keep that meeting secure. To, to try and do that on Zoom is gonna be complicated and won't necessarily be secure. And then lastly, we hired the new firefighter a couple of months ago, or the conditional offer. And I'm wondering, do we have any results on any of the testing, or any of, any results of any of the conditions of that? Offer of hiring the newest firefighter? If there's any news on that, could we have that too, please?
I know it's in progress, I, I don't think we're gonna have news until we have news, it was a conditional offer. But I think it's on, on schedule and taking about the same amount of time that all of our firefighter hires.
Good to know, thank you.
And one thing, regarding the, I meant to bring this up when we were adopting the agenda, the consideration easement, the closed session. We, the last time we went, we moved the, the board to another part of the township, and then we came back and adjourned. But we were thinking of just having public comments, and then the closed session, and then everybody can just, you know, adjourn, we can go home.
Yeah, we'd still come back here to adjourn, I'd suggest.
No, but no objection to moving.
We, we already did, we had public comments.
Yeah, I did, didn't even think about it until thankfully Rob for bringing it to our attention. Anyone else online?
If you're interested in speaking, please raise your Zoom hand. I see none.
Great, okay. Excuse me, moving on to approval of the minutes.
Yeah, two sets of minutes, special meeting, first? December third?
A motion to approve those minutes.
Or?
No, no problem. Just gonna sit on my hands.
All in, all in approval. Say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, none? Minutes approved, that was for these special, and then for the regular meeting, minutes of December third. No changes? Oh, you got a motion?
I, I moved your approval.
Okay, second?
I'll start.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion passes. Our minutes approved. Consent agenda, let's see.
I move the consent agenda as amended.
I'll support. This, this is a roll call vote, there's financials?
Yes, yes.
For Flintoff?
Okay, for our rules of order, we're starting tonight with me, Flintoff, yes, Grant?
Yes.
Monk?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Yeapoe?
Yes.
Consent agenda adopted seven zero.
Thank you. Reports. Here's a planning report, that's. Is there anything you wanna add? Sorry.
No, I think it's on.
Okay, great. Let's see, overall advisory committee, yeah, it's been a while, we've been working on the same thing, we are making progress, but to have the same report every time. But we are moving forward with our, our road prioritization plan for. This is when, for our funding every year, and we're having, the, the plan is, or the idea is to have a schedule of the roads that need improvement, and then just to keep that going over time. We're getting ready to work on the special assessment district policy, we finished the nuts and bolts for the public roads for special assessments. That will be to hand out to the parcel owners if they are considering a special assessment, it's kind of a step by step. But the policy is for not just residents to follow, but also for the township to follow, so we are all on the same page, and we don't run into issues that we've had in the past. Let's see, Caroline Altamir is working on the histories of, of roads, so we know some roads have never been improved. So we're going back to when they were created, she's doing a great job. Yeah, the road advisory community's really working well together, so that's about it for, for rec. Um, let's see, first Flintoff, do you have a report?
Um, yes, I included an update, a handout, the upcoming proposed agenda items, again, just trying to track these. And so I'm sure there's many, many more, but if you have items you wanna send to me, we'll just kinda keep a running list of our target items. I also wanted to let you know, we have, we very likely may have a special election in May. I just found out today, the Dexter School District is likely calling an election, so that would be for just half of our contract.
It would be the first Tuesday in May, if there, if there was.
Yes, it would be May ninth, actually, it's the, it's May ninth. So as soon as that's confirmed, I'll let you know if we need to move any dates, I don't think we will need to move any dates, and I don't think we should interfere with operations.
Oh, great. Anything else?
I have a brief update. Um, it's not a report, I spoke with David Rowley recently, a month ago, he called and asked me if I would provide a reference for him. He was applying for a new position within the Department of Treasury, and he, I did, he got the position. So he is now the State Division Administrator in the Property Services Division. The Bureau of Local Government in the Michigan Department of Treasury. And his position will involve administration of property tax laws and the General Property Tax Act in Michigan. So Ryan, you might be interested in.
I have some thoughts, yes.
I know, yeah, that's outstanding, it's outstanding.
Yeah.
So I guess he's never coming back to Si.
That's what I thought.
No, that's not where I was going. No, no. He taught the Board of Review meeting, or a class that I just took a couple weeks ago, and it was, I heard a familiar voice, but I didn't see, you know, they didn't have his picture, but that was really great. Yeah. That's awesome.
Yeah, thank you. I told him I was gonna tell the Board, honestly, it was official. It was official yesterday.
Oh, congratulations. Any other reports? Treasury?
Collected over the last week or so, think about one point four million dollars in property tax so far. Joel Spenden, I knew deputies doing an awesome job, he's been, probably gets get all caught up in working with folks as they come in, and. Rob, it's been a really great thing, just, just because I've seen this happen in the past, I will say, congratulations to John from Blue Line Fitness. When we pass consent agenda, it all goes by a voice vote, we won't discuss your item any further tonight, you're welcome to stay, but you don't have to. Something that some people don't realize when they're only going through the, the planning process, your, your item was approved during our consent agenda, but we won't specifically discuss it in any detail.
Oh, I thought I had to be present for questions, no?
Yeah, that, that's one thing I, I always hate, when I, I see people wait for a couple hours, and they don't realize that.
Yeah, that's, we put it under consent, there was, we didn't have questions.
We could have had questions.
We could have, but we didn't, so you are free to leave and enjoy your evening.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, probably, probably something you can remind.
Thank you so much for saving me that time, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Yeah, you could always stay.
I guess, you know, it says Blue Lion on his shirt.
Yeah, that was, he was the, he was the lack of planning commissioner, I was on, congratulations. But yeah, something we should probably try and let people know, especially when they're on consent.
Yeah.
If they aren't, if they aren't someone that's here and done development before.
Yeah, if we, and that was good, that was good catch. We would all recognize, hopefully one of us will recognize somebody that's here for consent.
Awesome.
Thanks. Thanks, Ryan. Let's see, any, any other reports? I did, for myself, or as supervisor, I did submit a report of what I've done since I took office. And I printed up, gave it to the township, or to the trustees here, and, yeah, it's been busy. And it's been, it's been interesting, lots of fun, lots, lots of work to do, so it is uploaded into the agenda online. And if there's anything that you wanna talk about, oh, maybe priority, how about that? That's a big one. So Kristy and I met with priority of general manager, Sam Kira Magno and Sam Kira Magno Junior. We, we received many. We received many complaints every day. Kristy and I have decided to split up the complaints, so she has been addressing missed pickups, I have been addressing billing, new service, and cancellations, while we've been kinda doing that. So they have agreed to. Well, so they, they explained all the issues which we heard when they came in front of us in July. And the re, you know, the background of that, and also that they are hiring for new customer service. They're, they're training them now, and we're giving them a month to get trained, and hopefully that will.
Still trying to hire them, they were still in the process of hiring.
Oh, so that was their intent, that was before?
Yeah, when, when were they gonna be on board, and he said, well, I don't know yet, we're still in the process of hiring. Is the way he said it.
Okay.
He, he hoped by the end of the month, but he wasn't sure.
Okay.
So I had a question, I forwarded resident email to both of you. This neighborhood hasn't had trash or recycling pickup in two weeks.
Is that the Lakeview Drive, or like? Yeah, yes. I did talk with one of the residents, and I did, trying to remember, was that before we met with priority?
It was after.
After, forwarded that over to Sam, and hopefully, because it, it wasn't just one resident that complained, there was, yeah.
Yeah.
And I don't know, I don't know why they're missing, well, that road is kinda strange, but they're, they're picking up some on that road, from what I'm understanding, and they're missing others. But I'm hearing that from different neighborhoods as well. But now, remember, they promised to have computers in their, their trucks, and that they have the state of the art facility, that they have these big screens, and we're assigned. Somebody to watch our drivers and whatnot, and then Kristy, I think, asked, well, are those, those screeners, or whatever they're called, just for Scioto? And he says, yes, also for Pittsfield and Superior, and we're like, okay. But that's, that's the, they're supposed to have these computers in their trucks, and they know which parcel has service and what doesn't, and they're supposed to pick them up as they go. So again, they may be short-staffed, decided to give them a little bit more time and go with that.
Thank you, and so, so my understanding is we need to start talking about the contract from prior to February, right? It's, it's, there's a, it opens, and I, we need to make a determination, I know we may not have that much decision-making, but I remember.
We don't.
Tom had suggested to us that the Board start engaging with them about that contract.
Yeah, we, there's already been discussion, and they do plan on.
Reopening?
Yes. Right.
Would they be willing to put in writing?
Sure, I'm just wondering if, if we can take this opportunity to, you know, try to improve some of the terms, even if slight.
It's their call, we have no bargaining.
Well, we do have the option for a re opener.
Yeah, so. But they would reopen, or when?
We, we have the option to request a re opener, and, and there are certain terms in the contract that we could try to renegotiate.
Yeah.
If we are the ones who are the catalyst for reopening, does that give them an opening to say, we're out of here?
They already have that, don't they?
Well, there's, I mean, there's, I haven't looked at the contract lately, there's a lot of termination language for both sides, so I, I can't answer that question specifically, but I, I do think, I mean. It might be time to have another meeting where we talk about what to do next, now that we are closer to the renewal of the project.
The new Board is seated.
We risk them raising our rates if we engage in reopening and renegotiating.
Potentially. So that, that's one of the things that would need to be discussed at the meeting, though, like, would, would it be worth it to get, if you could get better service, to pay just slightly more, or is it not worth it? Do you wanna keep, you know what I'm saying, like, I think there are a lot of issues that could be discussed, yeah.
So what is the timeline for that contract? Is it February, did I recall correctly?
Well, it's.
Six months before the termination.
It's a five year, so it's November of twenty twenty, so it would be November of twenty five, and then six months before that. Yeah.
Yeah. I think it's a nine month.
Nine months, okay.
So would we like to talk about this at our January fourteenth meeting?
Could I speak with Mariah about this first before?
Yeah, for sure.
I wanna, there's some things I wanna look into.
Okay.
Okay, so Mariah, after, maybe, or even next week, during the attorney meeting?
I'm off next week.
Wait, what is next week? Oh, yeah, I'm always working, so. Okay. Okay, anything else regarding reports? Nope, move on. Let's see, oh, okay, new business, possible action approved to issue notice of intent to issue bonds to fund construction of second fire station.
And Pat McGow is here, and Chief Hood, if you'd be so kind to come forward, we've all worked together on this item for a couple of months. I provided a background, the chief and I worked on it together, along with the finance team, and so, maybe I'll just, chilling, if we just wanna start with kind of questions from the Board. Again, this would be to issue the notice of the not to exceed amount for the bonds that we would expect to take out to fund the construction of the new station.
There, yes, I'm here. Well, would you?
Let me just give a little bit of background on this.
Okay, great, so for those of you that don't know me, my name is Pat McGow, I'm an attorney that has worked with the township in the past on bond and finance projects, so it's been a while since I've been here.
I'm sure you know the Chief is, so, so as you know, the voters approved a new millage for fire at the November election. And that's intended to pay for a variety of capital items, including a second fire station, as well as operational cost, staffing, et cetera. So the item before you tonight is the first step in the process to issue bonds to pay for the construction of a new fire station. And the idea is that the township will levy that new millage that was approved for a period of twelve years, is authorized by the voters. And part of that millage is gonna be used to pay debt service on bonds, that way you get the money upfront to build the new fire station. And then the rest of the millage is gonna be used to pay the operational costs. So this type of bond issue is called a capital improvement bond, it's a very common bond issue in Michigan that allows townships and other local governments to borrow money, pledging your full faith and credit. As backup, or as security for the bonds, with the intent that really you're gonna use the fire millage, or a part of the fire millage. But essentially, the, the pledge is that you're gonna use all your available taxing power to pay the bond, and that allows you to get a very good interest rate, the township has a very good credit rating. And we would look to sell the bonds sometime next year, assuming everything proceeds according to plan. The bond process is kinda two steps, so the first step is this item, which is for the Board to adopt a resolution indicating its intent to issue the bonds for the project. And that states what the maximum amount is, which is thirteen million, two hundred forty thousand dollars. The bonds would be issued to pay the cost to acquire, construct, furnish, and equip a new fire station, including fire apparatus and equipment, with all related site improvements, appearances, and attachments. So this is just gonna pay for the construction and the equipping of the fire station, it doesn't pay any of the operational costs. And then the notice also indicates that the bonds will be issued for a period, but not to exceed eleven years, and that's because the idea is the millage only goes out twelve. And based on the financial modeling, the idea was we wanted to use eleven years' worth of that revenue to go towards the bond payment. So if approved by you tonight, then that authorizes the clerk to publish. Um, so if approved by you tonight, then that authorizes the clerk to publish, uh, a notice of intent in the newspaper. And the bonds can be issued without another vote of the people unless a referendum petition is signed and filed by not less than ten percent of the registered voters. Within forty-five days. It's a pretty common process in a lot of bonding statutes where a vote is not required. Uh, and so the next step after that, the chief has been working with the architects for a long time. Uh, and the ideas, the designs would then be completed, uh, in the spring. Uh, the project would go out for construction bids sometime, I think you're targeting June, July.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
And so the idea is that the bonds would not be issued until we know the results of the construction bids. We would come back to the township board, uh, sometime in that summer timeframe. To ask the board to authorize the actual issuance of the bonds. And, uh, that may be after we have the construction bids available. So this item here is really the first step of a two-step process. It doesn't require that you issue the bonds. It also doesn't mean the bonds will be issued at that full amount. We like to use a higher amount than what we think it'll be. And that number was really selected based upon sort of the rough estimates of the station, uh, around thirteen million, but also designed. So that's roughly about one point five million dollars a year in debt service, which is what the finance team thought was the right number. Based on the other needs, uh, for the village money. So that's really kind of how that came about. But that's not necessarily the final number. That will come back to you later next summer, uh, once we have the construction bids. Um, the bonds would be sold then sometime after that, maybe August or so, and then we'd have the money, uh, roughly three weeks later. So this process is really being driven on the timing of getting in the construction bids. And then we would come back and have that second step and proceed to sell the bonds.
I'll just touch on process wise, um, that's all the nuts and bolts of bonding. Uh, other things you will see in front of you, currently working on a request for proposal for architect to finish the project as well as construction manager. Uh, when we, I work with O H M on that, when we have one prepared, you'll see that and authorize it. At that point, we'll go out and select, uh, we'll interview architects and construction managers, hire those people, uh, and the board will hire those people. Uh, from there, uh, we work on scale and scope of a project and we actually have finalized plans. Uh, at that point, the board will authorize, uh, I'd assume closed bidding for the project or however the construction manager recommends. Uh, then the board will award a bid, uh, and then we're back to, uh, issuing the bonds, uh, for the amount needed. So several steps, uh, still to go, um, and you'll see me quite a bit, I expect, over the next six months.
What's our, oh, go ahead. What's our current, uh, rating? You said it's a good rating. What's our current rating?
Jessica's at.
Forty percent.
No, 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 the rating, the bond rating is. Standard and Poor's, is it double A?
It, I think so. I think it was.
I actually don't have that right in front of me.
And what rate do you expect that to be able to generate for us?
Yeah, so the financial advisor had run different scenarios and right now they had used a four percent interest rate for an eleven-year bond issue. That's a little conservative based on today's market, but we don't know what the rates will be like in August. So that was used as kind of the plug number. And they would anticipate doing this as a competitive, um, public sale. So, um, that would mean that when we do go to sell bonds, you would take bids from a variety of purchasers and award. Based on whoever gives you the lowest interest cost.
Um, and chief, is the thirteen million that? When was that dated, that thirteen million?
So that's based off of, uh, we did preliminary work on the project, uh, that gave us rough square footage from the architect. Uh, and just over a year ago, that was the architect's opinion of probable cost. Uh, I then escalated that by, they said, between four and eight percent for, if, if we didn't do the project, starting, uh. Uh, they gave me one year four, four to eight percent escalator. I escalated it four percent or eight percent.
Okay.
Uh, and that's not, uh, but it, in our intent still, as we've been squeezing size and scope out of the project. So that was with the full project before we did any space reductions and.
So then.
I, I, yeah.
That looks like what the highest will be going for as opposed to.
Based on what we know now, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And I, I have much more confidence in these estimates than, you know, when we did the rehabilitation before the fire station. We've had our fire chief analyze this. We've had our finance director go over this. So these are well researched.
Okay, so they're more than just guestimates or like attorney numbers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The architect that did the preliminaries for us, um, uh, just in the county surrounding us, uh. Probably has constructed eight fire stations in the last five years. Uh, so they, they're, they're, they're an expert in the field, not to say we're going to use them for those, you know, we're going to throw R P emphasis for them, but. They, they, they seem to have good grasp of cost.
Yeah, I have a question. I'm curious about, um, the bond selling process. I thought I read something in there that talked about cycles. So when you present, you present the entire thirteen point two. Uh, at once, or do you do cycles of additional sales?
Yeah, good question. So, uh, this is expected to be a single bond sale and that's because, uh, when. And I don't know, your construction period is roughly, I think we talked about eighteen months.
Twelve to eighteen?
Twelve to eighteen months.
Yeah.
So if you're, if you've got a construction period that's roughly a year, a year and a half, it makes sense to do all the bonds at once. And you will then, so the way it will be advertised is, uh, single offering of thirteen million, whatever it ends up being. And whatever purchaser produces the lowest interest cost you would award to, that's typically going to be a financial investment firm and then they've already talked to buyers. So maybe banks are buying part of it, maybe they sell to individuals, but the reality is, is that you, you go out with a single issue. If this was something like a road project where you were expecting like a four, five or six-year. Construction period, or the way schools do it a lot of times is they'll do them in series. Where they've got multiple projects and they're not doing it all in one year. That's usually when you see an issuance split up into, into multiple series.
So with that procedure, um, then we would get. A sum of money, a fairly large sum of money, is it legit to earn interest on that?
Absolutely, yeah, so.
Be able to earn.
Right, easy ball.
Put it in Michigan class and we're making money.
Exactly. So, but that, and, and whenever you do a bond issue like that, you do get the proceeds all at once. You are allowed to invest it in whatever investments are legal under your investment policy, under Act twenty. And, you know, in the old days, you know, three years ago, you didn't earn anything, but lately we've been seeing, uh, interest earnings sometimes greater than the bond rate. So that may have been true about a year ago, but I mean, it's, it's certainly close to comparable. So you're right, you will have interest earnings on that money. And those interest earnings have to stay with the project. So that can only be spent on the project. It's not like you can take those and put them towards operational costs or other things. So in, in a bond issue like this, the interest follows the principal. So if the principal is put into the construction fund for the project. The interest earnings have to be spent on those project costs as well. And we wrote this a little broadly. Um, it, you know, we, we use the word equipment because it can also pay for some, some other fire-related equipment, not just the building itself. So that's some flexibility that there is some money left over at the end, which we're not anticipating, but that could be used for other fire equipment.
Let's see, Ryser, you had your.
No, I, no, I, I was answering, thanks.
I'm trustee.
So in our packet, we have our interim finance director talking about. Um, the capture issues with the DDA. And I know I've talked to Jessica about this a little bit. I'm, I've got a general understanding, but. Could you just kind of go over, you know, the, this issue of the DDA capture? And how it might play out in different ways?
Okay, sure. So the DDA, as you know, has been around for a long time. And the DDA under Michigan law is allowed to capture, uh, existing millages, but also new millages from entities that it's allowed to capture from. So they can't capture from the schools, the state of Michigan, or the intermediate school district, but they can capture from the township, the county. Community college and then any other, uh, taxing entities. Uh, so the DDA could, so, so if nothing is done, the DDA is entitled to capture this millage, just like any other township millage. Or any other new millage by one of those entities. Uh, the DDA could decide not to capture this millage. And that could be done a couple of different ways, but usually that's done with some kind of an agreement with the township or some action as part of their budgetary process. So if, uh, the DDA does nothing, then they would be able to capture a part of this millage that's levied within the DDA district. You know, the difference between the base value and the current. If they decide not to capture it, uh, then that would mean more money, uh, or you could adjust the millage rate, uh, whatever. So basically, if they do nothing, they will capture it and that'll be slightly less money coming in for the, for the fire project. If they decide to not capture it, then there'd be more revenue available for this.
Solely the DDA's decision and the board of trustees have any influence on that?
I would say influence, yes, because in a sense you are the governing body above the DDA. Um, you approve their budgets, but typically that would be some kind of an agreement between the boards.
Just a brief response to Kathleen's point on the process of this. I know. The board and DDA need to come to some agreement on this. I would also throw in, I think we should consider the, the open space and parks capture. That they do. Um, I will just note, January fourteenth, we're considering appointments to the DDA. And so at least for me, this will be one, this will be my litmus test for those captains.
I have a question in that regard. If they waive it or opt not to capture it. Um, when do they, is that an annual decision or is that a one-time decision at the outset? And when, when does that have to be made?
Yeah, it depends on how you approve it. I mean, it could be annual, but I would think you'd want to have some kind of an agreement that would be more of a long-term thing. Um, I think that would be good to do, you know. A lot of times that's done as part of the budget process when looking at what the expected revenues are the next year, um, but it could happen at any time.
Okay, thank you.
Um, one, one other thing, just to follow up, I, I did, uh, look, the, the township's current bond rating is double A. With a stable outlook from Standard and Poor's. So when you think about bond ratings, at the very top is triple A. Um, there are very few of those in Michigan. And then the double A category is the next category and there's a plus and a minus, just like school. Then we get to single A and then we get to triple B. So there's four. Kind of grade categories. So you are in near the top there with a double A, uh, credit rating, a stable outlook by Standard and Poor's.
Anyone else? I have a question. It's a twelve-year millage. And over time, um, the bond we're paying that back. If we would be, would we be able to pay it, pay the bond off early? Because I think in our meeting before, there's some, um, some bonds that have penalties for payoff early, others don't, depending. Would we be able to do that?
So generally, when we sell bonds in the bond market, the bond investors want to know that that bond is going to be outstanding for some period of time. And that's typically about ten years. So usually when a community sells municipal bonds, you can't pay it off early for the first ten years. And generally you can pay it off in that tenth year going forward. Now, for an eleven-year bond issue, that's, you know, maybe not likely to happen. But where that really comes into play a lot is sometimes, let's say if you do a twenty-year bond issue. Very often, and this is what we've done with the outstanding DDA bonds, when you get to that tenth year, you can very often refinance at a lower rate. Um, and, and in, in essence, pay off the old bondholders and then refinance for a lower interest rate. That's not likely to happen here because there's only going to be one year that is, uh, going to be able to be paid off early. But in theory, you could do that in the tenth year.
In the tenth year, possibly, um, and the heavily rollback, have, that's been calculated regarding paid. Because we're going to lose money over time because of the heavily.
Yeah, I believe, uh, when, uh, finance, uh, did their projections, they had, uh, an escalator that took into account some heavily, I'll move back, yeah.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess that's it. Thank you so much. This is exciting.
And what action do we need on this?
Um, a motion to adopt the proposed resolution to notice the intent to issue capital improvement bonds for fire station.
I would support that if that's a motion.
I'll support John. There you go.
Let's do a roll call vote, please. Flintoff, yes. Brandt?
Yes.
Monk?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Ryser?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Yafel?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you, Pat, for all your good work. Thank you, Chief.
Moving on to J two. Um, deliberation on proposed capital plan and proposed tree plan.
Um, sure, I just, all the information's in there. I just want to let folks know I printed out a larger copy of the capital plan. Along with a little correction and red that came late arriving. You'll see there. I just wanted to have that there and I want to thank all the staff for being here. Um, just a quick reminder, um, this is just discussion. This is the chance for the board to get all your questions on the table. I think there's probably going to be a lot. I will diligently, um, document. The materials in here include, um, a few things, um, our timeline, summary of cash notes. The document that says capital improvement plan notes, those are just notes from Ally, kind of between what departments submitted to her. And what slight changes she made, mostly because some things were submitted that weren't technically capital. Um, and then the C I P memo, which has the table of contents, it's the narrative. And the narrative aligns with this chart. Okay, so when you see, for example, BG dash one, that's building and grounds, project one, so on and so forth. Um, so with that, I wanted to suggest, I don't know if it works, if we just, um, kind of dig in and start going department by department?
Yeah, I was thinking maybe just right here at the top of our, or is there another?
Yeah, I think, I think that'd be fine. I, in the interest of, um, I know that buildings and grounds, there'll be some overlap with water and sewer and parks. So I wonder if we might, um, maybe just in the interest of everybody's time. Maybe start first with the fire chief and then with, um, Daryl from Open Spaces here. Would that be okay, Jillian?
Yeah.
Chief Pete? Come on up.
So the chief's items start, um. The second page of the capital plan, fighter dash one, two, three, so on and so forth.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you tonight. Um, and what, what's your preference? Would you like me to go through the items or just, uh, ask questions or?
Why don't you go through the items first and then we have questions?
Sure, absolutely. So if we look at fire one, uh, two cardiac monitors with service plan. Uh, we're proposing, uh, in the fiscal year ending twenty twenty-nine to purchase, uh, two cardiac monitors. Uh, those are used for, that can be used for, uh, defibrillation and replace some of our defibrillators as well as. Uh, obtaining twelve A D K Gs to determine heart attacks and, uh, much more, uh, diagnostic tools on medical calls.
And chief, is that, do we have these monitors already at station one? Is this affiliated to station two? That's what I thought.
Correct. This would be an upgrade in service to the residents.
And is this, um, the same as the cardiac monitors that were proposed before? We had a conversation that I think Kathy maybe only understood, um, about how many leads.
Yes, yes. Twelve lead EKG is the standard pre-hospital-y, uh, for an advanced life support ambulance. We do not, uh, operate at the advanced life support level. That's paramedics. Um, every paramedic ambulance you see driving through the community has one of these on there. Our county has allowed us, uh, as a basic life support agency, that means we don't give medications like, uh, the paramedics do and. Certain other things, but they've allowed us to purchase these and use them slightly dumbed down, uh, so we don't need to be as much advanced training. Uh, they can still diagnose quality D K Gs, they can, uh, a lot of, uh, resident-friendly features that we can use. Yeah, they're, yeah. Uh, let's see, replacement of air bottle filling station, currently, uh, the air bottles that we use when we engage in firefighting, uh, have to be refilled after every use. Uh, they're, they're high-pressure bottles. We're on our backs. We have a compressor at the fire station that we use to refill them. Uh, that is near the end of its life. Uh, it's a twenty, two thousand four, two thousand three model. Uh, the parts for that are no longer in production, uh, so when we do source parts, we sometimes have to. Parts for that are no longer in production, so when we do source parts, we sometimes have to wait. And oftentimes, when these things break at this age, there's no replacement of them. So we're budgeting for replacement before we are forced to replace that through a break. Replacement of our brush truck, I have that slated for next fiscal year, twenty-five, twenty-six.
What is a brush truck?
Yeah.
So if we picture the park we have behind the fire station here, and we were to have a fire back there. We cannot get our conventional fire trucks back there, so in areas with a lot of open space, we use a smaller vehicle. And in this case, we'd be looking at a heavy-duty pickup truck with a small pump and water tank on the back that we can use to access that area and extinguish a fire. And they're also useful in some trail areas where, you know, anywhere where we're away from paper roads.
Would that be able to transport somebody that went down or a pathway?
Yes, absolutely. Yep. One of the projects the board approved for this year, which we're working on over the winter, is a smaller utility-style vehicle. And this one is a larger unit. Both would have the capability to get someone off a trail. However, the smaller one's not generally a road vehicle. I'm sorry, I only have a small copy and I've got to squint a little bit to see.
Oh, sorry.
Replacement of, I'm sorry, I've got an item here for covering two years. Where I expect that we'll expend money for the second fire station. I anticipate that if the project gets started late summer, early fall, that we will see expenditures for that, both this fiscal year and next year. Replacement water tanker for Station Two. The board has authorized us already, and we have on order one water tanker. We're going to need a second one when we have our second fire station open. My intent is to take our existing water tanker, move that to our new fire station. And we'll need to replace that in the future. The NFPA, the National Fire Protection Association, published standards for fire departments to follow. Our vehicles should be in frontline service for no more than fifteen years and in reserve for no more than additional ten. So they have a twenty-five-year life expectancy. Currently, that's a twenty-two thousand two model year. So it is near the end of its life expectancy, and it has similar issues with our air bottle filling station. Parts are obsolete. However, the vehicle still runs good. I expect at some point, if we don't replace it in the next five to seven years, that it'll suffer a catastrophic failure, which will necessitate us towing it to a scrapyard. So something that is out there. This relates to the revenue and grant side. When a vehicle gets that old and we can prove need, we've got a much better chance of getting federal grants. So I feel more optimistic about writing for grants with that, since we have a second fire station open and potentially helping offset some of that cost.
You presented that strategy at the last meeting versus the ladder truck.
Correct, yep.
So Chief, would it be fair on fire, since we have estimated township share a hundred percent? Would it be fair to know what grant source we might go for to offset some of that?
Absolutely. Yeah, it would be FEMA's administered the fire assistance to firefighters grant. And obviously, that is, you know. As that gets older, it becomes a higher priority for them in the vehicle category, so provided that program's in place with the new administration. We're going to continue to apply for that funds.
For a part of that cost?
Up to a million.
Up to a million. Thank you.
Replacement of engine at Station One. Primary engine at Station One's a twenty-seventeen model year. We've got to be aware that, you know, it's approaching that fifteen-year life towards the end of this capital improvement plan. I anticipate we'd replace it with a new vehicle and then sell this while it still has some value. We've designed our tankers to be able to serve as a backup engine. So I'm less concerned about having an engine sitting in our barn. I'm more comfortable with us using that tanker short key when the need arises for maintenance repairs. CPR device with service plan. Currently at our Zeeb Road Fire Station, we have an automated CPR device. When we arrive on a cardiac arrest scene, we begin manual cardiac arrest CPR. After a certain point, we transition to the automated machine. It doesn't fatigue like people do. And it's fast becoming the industry standard for CPR cases. So we'd need to purchase one around the time that that fire station opens so that we have one at both stations.
And Chief, I think the numbering is off between the six-year plan.
It is.
Okay.
Yep, I corrected that with Ally. My apologies.
Okay, no problem. We're, we're rolling.
Ladder truck, I think we've talked about that quite a bit. I, I believe we've got the last piece of that puzzle solved, and I hope that we're able to order that this year yet. Or I'm sorry, next year, early next year. We do have about a six-hundred-day window to build that. It's about from order to delivery is about six-hundred days.
So Chief, I see on the narrative there was an initial verbal commitment from the DDA for five hundred thousand dollars.
Correct.
Okay. So one thing that the board should think about is just kind of how we make good on those future year commitments from the DDA.
Yes, we need to talk about that because if they for, that's not the right word. What is it?
Capture.
They don't capture.
They abstain from.
Staying, yes, then. They wouldn't be also donating or.
Well, they wouldn't have the money from it, yeah.
But. Right, and I have a plan for the next DDA meeting to have a deeper discussion, so.
They won't be asking any, any DDA nominees about these questions when they come to the board.
No, their appointment.
Appointments, yeah.
And. Yeah.
I'll send out an item for it.
Yep.
Okay, BC vehicle, this is a battalion chief or this would be for the officer in charge. Part of our plan when we finally fully staff the second fire stations, we will have a dedicated officer in charge. That's typical when you have two, three, four, five fire stations, you have one person to coordinate emergency response amongst everybody. And he or she typically drives her own vehicle, so we need some pickup-style vehicle with a cap on the back. I'm projecting out several years around a hundred thousand dollars. If we were to get that today, I think we're about sixty, seventy-five thousand. So there's a bit of escalation in there over the next several years.
And Chief, if battalion chief is not a position we currently have, if it were to be, would that be non-unionized or?
It would be a union position.
A union position if we were to have that included in the agreement. Okay.
Excuse me, and last but not least, projecting in twenty thirty, twenty thirty-one, we need to replace our air packs. These have a finite lifespan and the reaching end of life around that time. Again, if we have opportunity to write for grants, this is one I would like to write for. The bottles have to be thrown away after fifteen years. The air packs are obsolete after twelve to fifteen years. And this would put us right in that age range, and FEMA tends to look favorably upon grants for this equipment.
We see B eight.
Self-contained breathing apparatus. So it's a vest pack with an air bottle on the back and then the mask of the firefighter's.
Questions? Really well done.
Yeah, thank you.
You have enough money for all of it, too.
So.
We'll get there. Okay, thank you.
Sure, she's going to be here to meet it anyway.
Oh, okay. Are you planning to be here for the whole meeting, Daryl?
Yeah.
Okay, great. And you want to go to Murphy's online?
Oh, yeah, Murphy's on vacation, so we, let's bring her in.
Murphy, can you join?
Thank you.
Murphy is tuning in.
Oh, my goodness.
Hi. How's it going?
Good, how are you?
Pretty good.
How's the weather?
Um, eighty-eight and sunny. It's great.
Some vacation, you're with us.
I know. We were going to be playing cards after, so.
So Murphy, what we have in front of us is the chart corrected. There was a pavilion listed for one point five million dollars. I corrected that for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's what's.
Oh, that's what that was.
That's what that was, it was really.
Nice pavilion.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, scaled it back quite a bit after speaking with the Parks Committee. I had had a conversation with OHM at the initially, like probably two months ago. And they had kind of set the stage for a more, kind of like a more flexible space type pavilion. And I really liked the sound of it, and so I was kind of thinking that that might be the direction we want to go into. But after speaking with the committee, it just seems like more, more realistically, we'll start with a regular pavilion instead.
Well, would you like to take us through the projects, maybe starting with PP zero one, Zeeb Road Phase Five?
Yes, sorry, just one second. Sorry, my computers be weird. There we go. Okay, all right. Okay, here we go. So PP oh one, right, is where you wanted to start?
Yes, please.
Okay, so Zeeb Road Phase Five. This past year, we started with the engineering, and then what's left is the actual construction. And the, the biggest hurdles we're still looking at are the bridge and the, the railroad crossing. So right now, we're still, we have permission from each of the landowners. We have the easement from each of the landowners and their support of the pathway. But it's, we haven't had any updates lately. The plan, starting as soon as possible, not even waiting until next year, but the plan will be to likely in January, start requesting that OHM give us regular updates about where they are in terms of construction. Since, as far as I know, since I started, there hasn't been a major update other than we've moved forward with the easements for each of the landowners.
And Murphy, apologies, because this, I'm jogging my memory. I can't remember the last time we heard about this at the board, but I believe we've approved the engineering for this. And, and that's what's moving forward, and until the engineering's done, we won't have a firm sense of the actual construction costs.
Yes, that's my understanding.
And we also have, I think, one or two MEDC grants that will offset some of this a little bit.
Correct, that's why I put fifty percent for the total. I'm not sure if it's reflected in, in your copy, but fifty percent is what I put as the township's share because a little over, I think it's one point five million, should be coming from the MEDC grants.
And what is the, the deadline on the MEDC grant?
We, we'd already applied for these. These are the reimbursement-based grants. And, and that's, we, I'm happy to sit down with you when you get back and we can kind of look at what's left.
Yeah.
Because I don't think it's, yeah, quite, quite that.
Okay, sounds good.
I have a question to Murphy. The, the last time I saw this line item was at the DDA meeting last Monday. And it was two point five million at that time.
I'm sorry, for what?
This line item. She listed two point five on her sheet and.
Yeah, it should, you know, you're right. It should say two point five is the. So last year's CIP that was done, it was at two point five. I'm not sure where the two point nine came from. The two point nine was already filled in when I got this copy of the CIP. And I had changed it on the one that I distributed, but for some reason, yeah, it didn't get reflected in this copy. But it should be two point five, not two point nine.
Well, no, it says three point four.
It says three point four here, Murphy. That's where I was getting kind of confused a moment ago. It says three million, four hundred and thirty thousand per PPO one.
Okay, yeah, that's, I don't know why that, if that was maybe a change that Ally made, I don't know. That's not reflected on either of my copies.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I touched base with you on this and you said two point five.
Yeah.
We can, let's make a note of that.
So yeah, I would just note, too, like, this is one of those items that, you know, we, we're not going to know how much it's going to cost to build it until we really get good engineering and get closer to doing it, so.
Yeah.
And it's, it's one of these projects we, we've got to finish.
Yeah, when, when you get back from the holidays, it'll be good for you to just go to connect, because it has been quite some times, OHM is starting.
Yeah, I would, I'd like to hear from OHM, kind of, when you're ready, Murphy, it'd be nice to get an update to the board.
Sometime in January.
Okay.
Given that it's still at this engineering phase, is it reasonable to think it can be done or will be done in twenty-five, twenty-six?
You're asking me, oh, yes. I, I, I guess I, I couldn't say it'd be done, but I think it will have a larger chunk moving forward than where we are now. So at least substantial progress, if not completion. Because, yeah, that bridge is going to, the bridge is going to be, and the railroad tracks is where we're going to run into the most cost, I think.
But OHM, I recalled, they indicated that it may take as much as a year, I thought, to get railroadments.
Yeah.
And the permits from Eagle and Amtrak.
If they've said that in the past, then that is probably the case, but again, it's just, it's not. This project is, it's really complex, and it's, I'm not probably up to speed on it to where I should be at this point.
That's okay.
Yeah, it's a complex.
It is, but yeah, we should, we'll definitely need more information.
I think somebody has there showing some weird location at the top of the screen. I don't know if it's Matt or somebody else.
Oh, it's Matt Hart. I didn't know.
That's what I was like, I think it might be Matt.
Saved by the bell, Murphy.
Thank you, Matt.
Hello.
Hi, Matt.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Okay, yeah, so the, the biggest complications is the original easements that were procured by the township, you know, going back quite a while ago, are just twenty-seven feet. We still are working with Chris Chang and Murphy to set up some additional meetings with the property owners to meet, because we need some additional temporary easement. Those are critical in the process. We're kind of in limbo right now, and we can give a more formal update. The good news is, is the alignment really can't change from the preliminary engineering that was done. It's more about logistics and constructability. So we have, the first challenge would be the southernmost property that has a steep driveway. We're working on some modifications that actually save quite a bit of money on the retaining wall and try to minimize the amount of impact there. The bridge is undoubtedly the most complicated part, but we have a very good handle on that and actually are pretty far along. Eagle permits and whatnot still need to be obtained, but the final engineering's pretty much complete on that. And then we have the formerly known as the Sweepster property. There are some logistics that we need to sit down with that, that property owner and the township. Because there's some modifications that we want to make to their drives that are going to impact in and out in egress. I've also met with County Road Commission about potentially connecting to that pocket park, but as you guys know, that's a complicated S-curve right there. And so the road commission has been involved a little bit. The other part of this is we're going to design the railroad crossing, but we're still waiting on D four and D three permits for the border-to-border. Those have improved. MDOT and Amtrak Department of Rail have been a lot faster lately, but we're still going on like eighteen months with D four. So we're going to bid the work, but we're probably not going to have the permits for the rail, probably closer to twelve months from now. So just to kind of lay everything out, design will be completed in twenty twenty-five. We're probably looking at a summer, midsummer, final design. And then an advertisement to bid in the fall with any hope of good bids and everything kind of falling into place. We might be able to get started in the late fall, but more, more than likely, it'll be spring of twenty twenty-six with construction being completed and the trail open in twenty twenty-six. So hopefully, that kind of shines some light on it. A lot of work has been done. But a lot of it has to do with, like, we can't continue to complete the design until we get confirmation for some of the property owners and the temporary easements. Some of the permitting needs to be completed, and we don't want to do work and then have to redo it if a property owner wants something else. So those meetings are really. So those meetings are really critical. And I had spoke with Chris Chang earlier, um, maybe last week now. Basically saying, start of the new year, we're going to have to sit out and sit down and schedule those meetings and have a face to face with each of those property owners. And and maybe the township has already done that and we just weren't included, but um I I don't think so. I think those still need to kind of get finalized and formalized. So um, the good news is, is I I think we're on track. I think we had always thought of late twenty five, twenty six construction for this. Um, and I think we're still on track to hit that. So hopefully that helps clarify. And then we're happy, I'm happy to have the project manager come in and give more of a formal, uh, more of a PowerPoint presentation, just especially for the new board members. Just to kind of see where we're at with that one. Um, it's it's probably time. It's been a good eight months before we've really, since we've talked about this in detail.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
I want to talk about uh approaching the homeowners for easements. I know in the, in the P P P committee meetings, they talk about committee members talking to these property owners. And I don't believe they should do that. They're not agents of the township.
We we did get ourselves in in trouble in years past with well meaning volunteers trying to negotiate easements for us. I agree with you.
But they that has, that did happen, so I'm just suggesting to Murphy that we keep it in house.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Murphy.
Yes.
Good. I guess, uh, to P.
Sure.
P P oh two.
Yep.
Yep. So the second project is the stormwater management and native species landscape. This is in fulfillment of the contract that Lithia has with the township to provide um. I think they have bio swales out there and there's some type of stormwater management that could be done with um the introduction of native species. This is a number I generated based on the landscaping that was done around Township Hall Park. And I'm anticipating the project with Lithia being a bit more um, a bit more complicated. And since part of the project in the in the uh contract was to provide educational signage, that's where another um chunk of money comes from. Not a large amount, but some amount. And the entire share of the cost is supposed to come from Lithia itself. So um zero percent is township share.
Great. I suggest maybe we change the title of this to make it more clear which property it is.
Um, I did put Lithia on there. That's the, unless there's.
Yeah, she was calling it Lithia.
No, no, I know she has been, but on here it does. It's not.
Sure.
Yep. Because some, we're going to ask the same question. What property is it?
That's Lithia Storm Water Management. Okay.
Shall I move on to the next one?
Yes, thanks.
Okay, um, I'll just combine three and four since they're fairly similar. They're both uh phase two and three of the Township Hall Park Playground. Right now, we're working on phase one with Eagle Scout Brandon, but phase two and three would be adding three more play structures per phase. And I don't have my notes on me and I I could probably break down the, each piece of equipment that we're proposing go with those phases. But for the sake of time, um, that's the the summary of those two projects. And after speaking with the D D A um last Monday, they've agreed in their capital plan, not not yet their budget, but in their capital plan to include fifty thousand per year to go towards go to parks for these specific projects. So um we, again, zero percent of township, as long as their budget reflects the capital plan as discussed last Monday.
I would have hoped that the D D A gave you a hundred thousand per year. That's what they've verbalized in the past.
I would, you know, I would take a hundred thousand for sure, but I'm I'm just happy with the, what we got, so. But it would definitely be worth negotiating um a little bit more in the future.
You need somebody to twist an arm.
Thank you. All right, and should I keep going?
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, uh Township Hall Park Pavilion is substantially scaled back from my initial idea. And it's, it'll just be a more basic pavilion with um standard structures, picnic tables. Um, it's just kind of your, your.
Will it be a cover? Will it be a covered electricity?
There will be no electric run out there at this time. It'll just be um a primitive structure. So roof with picnic tables.
It'll be a cover, so you can do your bat and your stars and your projects out, your your events out there?
Definitely, yes.
Okay.
And it'll also be good to service the residents that are coming to the playground as well. So if people want to go out there and have a picnic or even have like a birthday party, it's just a simple space that's protected from the sun and just a a comfortable community space. Okay, shall I move on? Okay, um, the next is the tractor with attachments. And I'll just go and and roll that into P P eight, which is the selling of the Kubota. The Kubota that we have at the moment is not sufficient for the type of natural areas management that needs to be done at our parks. And though it it does a great job with the brush to maintain the Z Road Pathway, both in fall and winter. So removing leaves that could cause a slip hazard or removing snow, it does a really good job of doing those things. But in terms of maintaining the parks, um, removing the large amounts of invasive species, especially you could look at Township, not Township Hall Park. Um, you could lo- look at Liberty Pond Nature Area and see that we have our work cut out for us out there. And after consulting with um Dave Borneman, who does the prescribed fires in this area, he's the most um widely used contractor for prescribed fires. He um was suggesting that even prescribed fires to start maintaining the natural, um, the invasive species out there. It's not going to be sufficient. There's way too much thatch. And the the best way to start in these areas is to use a large brush hog. And the Kubota that we have now is just too small. It can't handle the amount of woody invasives that are present in a lot of our parks and all of our parks, really. So in selling the Kubota that we have now, along with the three snowplow and brush attachments, we would likely get more than, more than half of the price that we initially paid for that. Uh, I'm go, I'm airing on the conservative side, so still hovering around fifty percent is the number you're seeing contribu- um, associated with the Kubota that we would get back. But we've put so few hours on that Kubota that we're likely to get probably closer to seventy percent of what we initially paid, which could go directly towards funding a tractor that would be more useful and more appropriate for what needs to be done. It would also be able to be fit with a brush uh similar to the brush that we have for the Kubota, so we could still use it to maintain Z Road Pathway. It would just also serve a lot more functions than than what it serves now, which is just maintaining Z Road Pathway.
And and Murphy, just so you know, the selling of the Kubota, um, Ally removed it, so it's not got a number.
Oh.
But we do have a note in that, so.
Okay.
So so that makes sense. Um, and I think, I think I shared with you, but for the new board members to the Kubota, we bought not even four years ago at the recommendation of the, you know, then, you know, people involved in the effort. So I just want to like a- ask us to kind of think about how we can make sure when we're doing these assessments of buying this equipment, that it's, you know, meeting all of these. I I trust your recommendation and I like that we can sell it and that it's something that will take care of the boardwalk as well. Um, but just, it's just kind of a question I have for us. Like, how can we do our due diligence that we're, you know, purchasing the right equipment for all these different specialized operations? Thanks, Murphy.
Thank you. Um, next is the utility barn for storage. Um, as as it stands now, there just isn't sufficient storage for a piece of equipment, the tractor mostly. With our current storage situation being the garage that's attached to Township Hall. So I've proposed a very basic utility um garage that would sit most likely across from the parking lot of Township Hall. Um, it would just have a dirt floor. It's not, nothing, nothing too, nothing elaborate or fancy. It won't have electricity. It will just have uh four walls to keep the tractor and the attachments from being exposed to rain and and elements. And would just also act as protection for um, just protecting the equipment from people passing by as well.
That makes sense.
All right, um, the.
Will we be running, Alexa, will we be running electricity across the parking lot anyways or geothermal potentially?
I could not answer that.
I wouldn't believe it would be.
If we are, now's the time to crunch it, just to, you know.
Yeah, I think all the electrical components and stuff like that would be in the the bathroom that is proposed to be used.
Okay.
So yeah, we have about five things to be proposed. So you're on to something.
Booting a new parking lot in twenty eight, twenty nine.
Yeah. Okay, so Murphy, Park Park Road Parking Lot Engineering is what we have next.
Okay, so out on Park Road, it's part of the SiO Farms Trail System that has been expanded that you can uh walk out to around Park Road and the the set of trails out there. We're thinking that because SiO Farms itself, that's acting as the trailhead right now, there's nowhere for people to park that don't already live in SiO Farms. And so in order to make sure that people that want to access those trails aren't maybe parking inconveniently or even using the parking that's at their clubhouse, we want to make sure there is an alternative place for people to access those, that trail system, which will be expanding as well. So it's going to be a a very large trail system. I think that people are going to be really excited to access those trails. So we want to make sure we have a safe place for them to park. There's plenty of space out on the Park Road parcel to incorporate a gravel parking lot. It won't be anything um, you know, too too elaborate. It would have a kiosk and a trailhead sign. And then just a place for people to park, probably four to five cars at a time.
At the Psyker property?
The Psyker property?
Psyker at Stabler and Park.
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay.
Murphy, what would the kind of impacts be about kind of moving the entrance from within SiO Farms to outside of SiO Farms, if I'm understanding that right?
There's still, there's still a trailhead within SiO Farms, so the people that live in SiO Farms, nothing's going to change for them. Other than, yeah, so nothing's going to change for them. It would just be a more of a change for the rest of the residents of SiO Township who maybe don't even know that SiO Farms is there or that you can access that trailhead because it's located within SiO Farms and there is no parking as it stands now. And to deter parking in the the open lot that sits right in front of the trailhead, there are bolt, pardon?
Is it the clubhouse where people are parking?
No, no, I mean, they could. Um, I actually, you know, I don't know if there are many residents that access SiO Farms Trails. I'm not sure how many residents are, you know, it's it's a, it's kind of a confusing setup the way it is now. And mostly what I'm trying to imply is that having a a trailhead that's outside of SiO Farms would increase the number of people that are aware that that park exists and then would increase traffic in that in that park, which is something we definitely want to see. Because it's great. It's a beautiful trail system. It's going to be expanding. There's another large open field that we're going to be putting trails, um, that's a um, what am I trying to say? It's inaccessible on all sides, except for a small easement that you can only access through the trails that already exist at SiO Farms. So it's going to be a a large place. People that live at SiO Farms already really enjoy using it. In terms of traffic from SiO Farms, I'd say it's one of our most used trail systems, but it is still largely inaccessible for people that don't already live in SiO Farms.
Yeah, I I'd just be curious to go go see it and talk with you further about it.
Yeah.
Um, I'm just curious about, you know, I'm always sensitive to people living in SiO Farms and people outside of SiO Farms and the major socioeconomic divide we have. Um, so I know like using SiO Farms as a polling place too. You know, I have a lot of feedback from a lot of people who don't live in SiO Farms about how they feel about going to um SiO Farms. And so I just want to make sure that, um, I just want to understand more kind of the usage and make sure that people who are living in SiO Farms feel like they're really able to engage in our trails. And it sounds like they are.
Yeah, I I mean, I, nothing, nothing about having the Park Road Parking Lot changes anything for the residents of SiO Farms.
Okay, all right. I think I'll understand more when I see it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anna Colony had a program with SiO Farms for building birdhouses, which was very successful. That sounds very engaging for that community. Sorry, Dan.
No, 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 if anything, this would allow people from curbs ways, from trailways, from the new residential development on the Menards Outlet, from Arbor Point, from French Country Estates. It would allow all that density to have a closer public access trailhood, trailhead.
Exactly.
Okay, all right.
All right, um, next is the, actually, did I take that out? Do you guys see the SiO Church Road Parker Road Observation Deck? Or does that take it out? It is, okay, okay, um. So that is something that I, it's, it's still just in the very infant stages of even conceptualizing. But with the four corners out where there's like, I think it's Salem, Lodi and Lima Townships, there's the the wetland space that's out there. It's a really awesome, unique place. And though we don't, it's not technically owned by a SiO Township, the easement of that wetland is owned by the township. And so getting a chance to, um, sorry, having a chance to maybe conceptualize ways that that space could be interacted with in the future. For so, for example, the observation deck, so that we could even attract um birders that might want to go out there and see the waterfowl. I've, I haven't seen them personally, but I've heard from lots of people that there's a pair of swans that are out there every year that have um, that have chicks. So that'd be a really cool place potentially to to see what we could do uh to attract more people to that part of the township.
Yeah, Murphy, regarding that, I was thinking about that earlier. It's.
Where do you park?
Yeah, where do you park?
Exactly.
And impact graphic and.
Exactly, and that's why, that's why it's still, like I said, so so infant in the stages, because that is something that that with the easement that's currently in place, um, I think that this project would involve um, collaboration with the other townships if we were to do that, because you have to think about the safety of pedestrians. Putting a parking lot, a parking lot probably wouldn't even be allowed to be put there under the current easement as it is. So an observation deck might be something we'd be able to um, might be something that we could finesse with the easement, but definitely not a parking lot on the conservation easement. I don't think that would, that would ever fly. So something where we kind of work with the other townships to see if there's a space to implement a parking lot and then subsequently safer passage from that parking lot to an observation deck. And this is just all, you know, just an idea. And I think it'd be really cool. I'm not trying to minimize how how awesome I think it would be. But again, like, if it, if it ends up not being feasible, then that's, you know, I can see that maybe being a possibility, almost definitely. But I like the idea and I'd like to try to see where we can get with it.
Oh, thank you.
Um, then we have that.
Miscellaneous Parks Capital Projects.
Oh, okay, that's different than mine.
Oh. What do you have?
It's got zero percent, so it's must be funded by grants.
Oh.
It says, it says this project will be funded by the D D A. The D D A plans to give fifty thousand in F Y E twenty twenty eight to the Parks Fund to spend on various capital projects.
Yeah. For in uh earlier items.
Okay, let's just take that out.
Yeah, that's true.
That makes sense. Um.
Okay, I guess I think that yours might be very different than what I actually submitted. So could you, could you mind telling me what's next on your?
It's got to be, that one's got to be a duplicate, because it's already referenced up in um oh three.
Yeah, so the last that I have um is P P ten, which is the observation deck. Do you have anything after?
And that that should be it. And then the the boardwalk maintenance item that you submitted, um, that that was removed just because it's not technically capital, but it'll be in your budget.
Hmm. Okay, and.
All right, there's a memo back from Ally that in in some notes that it's.
Okay, I, do you mind, Judy, do you mind talking about to that? Okay, I, do you mind, Judy, do you mind talking about to that? I I thought that we kind of discussed that it might have ended up being capital, but what are your thoughts on that?
When it was put in, though, did you change the wording?
I did.
Because remember, we talked about maintenance was going to imply general fund.
Yeah, so I changed it to repair and replace since there are boards that will need to be replaced each year.
Maybe I'll follow up with Ally then to see if she understood that it actually is capital investment that lasts over years.
I think the word restoration might be appropriate.
Okay, because it's because she must have, initially, the report did include maintenance. We talked about it and said maintenance is not going to fly for capital improvement and and yet it it's meant to be capital improvement because it lasts years and years and years. So I'll talk to Ally about that.
Makes sense.
Thank you, Judy.
Sure, thank you, Murphy.
And then do we want to do Tree Fund?
We do.
Okay. All right, we have just three Tree Fund related projects. The first is the West Side Preserve Rest Reforestation Project, which we had spoken about back when we first got the Tree Fund. Not the Tree Fund approved, but the Tree Fund.
Policy.
Yes, thank you, the policy approved. So that's the same as it was before, the same amount. The second project is Liberty Pond Nature Area Reforestation. And these are projects that I I really need need to and want to speak with a forester, a professional about, but I would like, I like the idea of converting more of Liberty Pond into forested area. A lot of it is currently, and I had had this conversation with David Borneman back when we had our site walk. And as much as there's the push for pollinator habitat and prairie restoration, most of what this area was pre-settlement was different types of forests. So I'd like to meet with a forester to talk about what kind of reforestation would be appropriate in that area. And then the Van Curler Preserve Plantation Removal and Reforestation. There is a pine plantation that's remnant from, I'm assuming from when the Van Curlers owned the property. And I would find it beneficial to remove the plantation and reforest it with native tree species.
I think these look great, Murphy, and I would just, you know, encourage you if there's, you know, even you know, more that we could plan to do with the Tree Fund to encourage that we we put it in there. We certainly have the funds. I think it's exciting to see these like, you know, first three projects, but even if there are things that you can imagine we might do in twenty nine, thirty, thirty, thirty one down the road, even if they're not fully fleshed out. Would like to see as much of that fund planned for as possible.
I would too. I my hesitancy and and I took it out. I had actually broken down the subsequent years in my in my copy of the CIP because though the largest sums are going towards the first year of the project, it's still going to take heavy costs for maintenance and just keeping on top of each of these projects is maybe not a, it's not going to be capital improvement, but it is going to cost quite a bit. And so I'd say even you could take for each of these projects, add another thirty thousand potentially just for upkeep because we don't actually know. And that's part of the the gamble with with reforestation projects. We're just, I don't want to plan too far ahead because I want to see how how we do with the projects we have first and then kind of figure out how to move forward.
Okay, cool.
Except with, keep in mind that this gets revisited every year. So be aggressive, be ambitious about planning out so that we can revisit it here and and refine it as we go.
Okay, all right.
There's no demerits, no demerits.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I bring something up? I don't know if I should bring this up with with Murphy or with Chris or on this body, but what about the non-motorized pathways that connect along Park Road and connecting Oak Valley to Uplands? So how do we get non-motorized pathways on on the capital improvement plan? Because I thought they were last year, weren't they?
No, not pathways. They were sidewalks.
Whether it's sidewalks or asphalt pathways, but I'm talking, how do we get sidewalks, pathways, and maybe that, I don't know if that comes in the road or?
Yeah, John, that's what we need to figure out. Yeah, let, if I could, let, I suggest we talk about that on the road because you're right. At the end, we we added in kind of the language around it. There was never a funding source or a dollar amount, and there's been zero activity. And so when I checked in with folks about it, where's this stuff at? If we want to get it back in, we need to make kind of a specific idea and and have somebody.
What do you mean by action?
I I just mean there's been no no activity, nothing was budgeted, nothing.
Isn't OHM kind of looking into? Is it OHM? I'm sorry.
Murphy, go ahead.
Sorry. So actually, Matt, if you're if you're still there, do you mind addressing the Park Road? Because that's what you're speaking about, John, right?
No, no, no.
Yes, I am. I am. I'm talking about two. I'm talking about I'm talking about sidewalks or non-motorized pathway F from from Arbor Point Cedar Bridge. And from Oak Oak Valley to to Upland, I'm sorry.
Trustee Riser, the Park Road Pathway, that's in here.
Road number two, John. We should label, we could label it Road and Pathway.
Yeah, because it says road paving. Okay.
We can name it Road and Pathway.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. And then the other one.
Oak Valley?
Yeah.
That's the one that Clerk Clintock was saying that there was no action, there was no budget, there was, there was just, it was an idea.
But if we want it, we need to, you know, say that we want it, but specifically what we want to do, an engineering study from what to what.
And there's not, is is there engineering? Isn't there a grant for engineering on it or wasn't there?
There wasn't. There wasn't any budget. There wasn't any.
We did a platform connecting communities grant. We just found out, I think it may have been just earlier this week, we got denied.
Because I told you, they don't fund sidewalks. I said that in public comment.
So, thank you, Chris. Yeah. So so, John, certainly, when when we get to, it's actually, I mean, anybody should propose it. We should get it in there.
A little concerned that we start telling OHM to go do something and the board hasn't approved it.
Well, I certainly wasn't going to do that.
Yeah, we didn't.
So that's why I asked the question, what do you mean by action? So sometimes people get very enthusiastic and they ask OHM to start doing something.
Well, it was an issue we did discuss and the whole group discussed it and.
No, because at the Capital Improvement Plan, there was only four of us that attended.
But it got, then it fell apart. Kathy, there there was language included about the intention to do something along those lines, a lot of language. There were zero dollars and no fund identified, and then there was nothing budgeted and no one did anything. That's the status.
I can't remember the discussions about it.
Yeah.
And he is, he is right about that.
There was a discussion.
In the Capital Improvement Plan meeting, the special meeting that we called last year, and it was you, me.
Yeah, but it got adopted in there, John, and and we can, we can, we can put it in again. What was kind of awkward about it among versus the other ones is because there was no fund or dollar amount. You know, we just need to kind of firm it up if we want it in there.
Okay. But it's not under PP stuff, it's under RD stuff.
For a long time, Road Advisory Committee has been asking, where do sidewalks fall? Does it fall under pathways or does it fall under roads?
Well, regardless of the advisory committee, it's just kind of how we want to fund it, John. That that's what's going to drive where we're going to be there.
At the appropriate time, I would like to at least broach the topic again. And if it's not now, I yield, apologize.
No, no, it should be tonight, John. It should be. So when we get, I guess, when we get down to that part.
Murphy, is there anything else?
I I don't believe so. I think we're good.
Okay, well, thank you and intercommunication.
Yeah.
Thank you. Bye. Thank you.
Could we jump to Landisman? Daryl, do you mind if we jump to Landisman? Thank you. This is the Open Space Fund.
Yes, please.
So for the last Preservation Commission, our proposal for capital improvements, keep in mind that this is very much a guesstimate at any time. This is the nature of the beast. But what I have down here is a total for the next six years of six approximately six point eight million. And the main focus of that is we recently a grant application was submitted to RCPP Federal Federal Grant Program with Legacy Land Trust as the lead applicant. But we were a partner and we had pledged six million for that grant application. It was awarded. So we potentially have six million in federal funds, matching funds, which means we bring in six, they bring in six for a total of twelve. We also have a federal grant application in with ASAP that, I understand, has been, has received favorable grading, but we have not heard any definitive word as to whether or not it has been awarded. I'm keeping my fingers crossed. So that again is a matching grant, so the total of that would be six point seven. We would bring to the table, the feds would bring six point seven. And that needs to be spent the next five years. So with that, what I did is for the first year, the one point nine six four, that we have currently have five active projects that we hope to bring to fruition in the next twelve months if we're lucky. And so I put that down for the first year and for the remaining five years. These are guesstimates, but the total is a six point eight sorry, six point eight six four million. And that would be our share plus an additional six point seven from the feds, which brings it over to three point five million dollars, thirteen point five million dollars that we hope to put conservation easements on the ground. That's our, that's our aspiration. It's very ambitious, but we hope to hit the ground running very hard this year. Any questions?
So so, Daryl, I think it's a suggestion I'll make for other areas too, that what we'll do is reflect that full amount, that six points, that thirteen point four million and reflect that we're estimating fifty percent will be township, fifty percent federal grant. And then would it be fair to just kind of double your estimates for each of the fiscal years?
Well, it's not exactly double. I'll rerun the numbers.
Perfect.
And I'll send it to you and then we can, and we can tweak that percentage as well because it's not an exact.
That's great.
I will do that.
Awesome.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's see. Well, under general fund, there are water and sewer.
Yeah, I guess there's water and sewer. We might as well just get it over with.
Water, soup?
Yeah, and Brandon, you also have building.
Yeah.
Water and sewer first and then move to general fund because we're going to have to look at roads and building ground and capital.
For sewer zero one, we have a three-year cleaning and television program. So we'd be contracting and we'd be contracting out cleaning TV services, perhaps continuing to go with pipeline management from twenty five through twenty seven. And then in twenty twenty eight through twenty twenty one or twenty thirty one, depending on circumstances, we would like to bring doing the television and factoring inside and have that something that the utility department does on its own.
What is the, what is the cost then? And and forgive me for not totally totally understanding. So like the cost, the equipment needed to clean and televise, where is that reflected in the CIP?
So that is reflected under water and sewer. Under the utility vehicles.
So so where I see that three hundred and thirty six thousand, one hundred and thirty six thousand, one hundred and thirty six thousand?
Correct. Yep, so in twenty twenty eight through twenty, twenty twenty eight to twenty thirty one, part of the money budget in that timeframe was for purchase of a vector truck. I propose a five-year loan with five percent interest as a placeholder. A hundred K down for the first year and about thirteen thousand a month. And so that would pay the truck off in five years.
So are these the total cost of the actual truck financing aside? What's the total cost of the vector truck?
We, right now, because it's, it's like seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand?
Yeah.
Can we improve this description to say what the vehicle is? Instead of utility vehicles, you're talking about?
Multiple utility vehicles listed under it though.
Yes.
Maybe vector truck can be its own project.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's, it's such a different operational.
And Brandon, you said right now you're projecting it's going to be seven hundred thousand?
Seven hundred and fifty is what my guess would be at that point when we buy it. It's a little cheaper right now.
Yeah, twenty eight through twenty three, three thirty six, the one thirty six, three twenty, and the one thirty six, three twenty is only six oh eight, six four.
Yeah.
Right, because in the, in the first year that we buy it, we're putting a hundred thousand down. And then we're also making thirteen thousand, a thirteen thousand dollar payment each month. So you're actually paying two hundred something thousand the first year for it.
What what I'd ask you to do, just to simplify it for us, Brandon, is just put the real actual capital costs financing aside, right? And then if you have ideas about financing like grants or particular, you know, loans or something we should go for, put it in the narrative, but put the total full costs in the capital plan.
The full cost is in there at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's just split between the years.
But the estimated total says seven hundred and thirty three. Doesn't equals seven fifty. I'm looking at WNS dash zero two. Is that the one?
Yeah.
So what Ryan said, it's a little light, right?
Yeah, because it looks like you have sixty thousand dollars planned for twenty five to twenty six. That's the copy I have. It's just wrong.
Brandon, did you say there's, there's more than one vehicle that you have listed in under utility vehicles? How many other vehicles are there?
So two vehicles and then another piece of equipment. So one would be a additional pickup truck so that each utility technician has their own vehicle. In twenty twenty seven, I propose getting rid of the twenty sixteen F one fifty as it will be ten years old. And we would replace that, we trade it in and get whatever we could for it and still have some value. And then in twenty twenty eight, a bobcat with brush hog attachment or a brush monster, mulcher attachment and forklifts. And that would be, some of these, like I said, some of these are contingent on whether we get the utility garage or not. So it could completely change if the board's not wanting to move forward with the utility garage. Those, in the coming years, they would just be removed from the CIP plan.
So Brandon, what I think might help is if we break out utility vehicles maybe into three projects, have one project that says vector truck, one project that says bobcat, and then one project that says, you know, pickup trucks. So can you, you've shared a little bit with me about what a vector truck means. And we wouldn't do the cleaning and televising, but my understanding is if we purchased a vector truck, we have to dispose of the waste. Can you, can you talk us through kind of operationally? Can you, can you talk us through kind of operationally what that would mean?
So we, uh, whenever we are filled up, um, you can drain all the liquid in our own sewer and then it'll allow us to, um, keep cleaning additional footage of, uh, the sewer main. At some point in time, we would need it to deliver the contents, the solid contents somewhere. Um, talking to Superior Township, they take it to Yucca. Um, and so they have a, that's, it's the name of their, uh, water and sewer, um, group out there. And so we would take it to their facility. Uh, there would be a fee. I had to look into it more. Um, it's still going to be far cheaper than paying additional company to come in here. Um, and we would pay Yucca in order to dump those contents there.
And would we be permitted to dispose of it at Yucca?
Yeah, it would just, uh, be a conversation that we had with them. There would be a, um, right now they don't charge Superior Township. All they only took, um, a couple loads there and then they're, they're getting their truck right now fixed at Jackdaw Hiney. Um, however, I do believe that there's gonna be some, a cost associated with, with dropping, um, the solids there. I think, once, once I know the direction the board's wanting to go, I can get a, a, a better number and present to the board. The true cost of all this, that's gonna happen, but it's still projected if we do this in-house. Um, once we get the utility garage and a vector truck, we're gonna save a million dollars over a eight-year period, whether we, we do it in, inside, you know, or if we contract it out with pipeline management, it'll be a million dollars more. So there'll be an immense amount of savings if we take this on ourselves.
Why would we want to do this?
Why would we want to do this? So to save the residents' water and sewer rate money, um, because?
Of all the residents?
The water and sewer district.
We have to look at the cost analysis of this. I mean, I, I hear you and I, I think initially when I see, oh, we could contract something out for 250,000 or we could do it in-house. It, it's natural for me to think, hey, it'd probably be cheaper to do it in-house. But, but I think, um, you know, what I want to understand more, and I know you mentioned, Matt mentioned, he was gonna get somebody from O H M to maybe sit down and kind of support the town with them kind of developing kind of like the operational plan, like what, what are we trying to achieve? Are we trying to, you know, achieve cost savings, better service, all the things we want to do, but kind of, this would be a big change to how we do our operations and it'd be helpful to kind of make the case for it.
Uh, to me, I don't, I don't really know why I would have to have O H M involved. I mean, I've been doing this for 10 years, but to make the case, the residents are the most important thing. We already get complaints about our water and sewer rates from the big increase that we had. A saving a million dollars over an eight-year period to do this in-house is the main reason why we would do it here. Also, we'd have our vector truck on hand to respond to any emergencies uh, much more quickly than if we had to call random contractors and hope for them to come in here. Luckily, we do have a one-year contract with pipeline management where they will respond within two hours. Um, but, you know, going forward, my vision is to keep the water and sewer rates as low as possible and that's the reason why once you get to a certain size, most utility departments will bring stuff inside instead of contracting out because there's a significant increase in cost by contracting it out.
And that, and that's just what I want to spec out, you know, we need to study it.
And, yeah, I would like an analysis of the financials. You know, more than back at the envelope, I mean, have a finance director look at whether it's O H M or a financial person.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting we needed O H M. I was just referencing when we met on this internally several weeks ago, that would.
Yeah, I mean, of course, if there was a direction given to me, I'd be, it'd be much more easier for me to tell you exactly what the cost savings would be, but I, you know, without the, without knowing if we're gonna go towards a utility garage or not. Um, you know, there's, you know, I, there's not much for me to look into at this point.
I just feel like I need some analysis of the options and maybe, maybe it's a committee or something like with what we did with the, the fire group, but kind of look at like kind of what, what we're going for or even the, the million dollars over eight years, if we could even kind of, you know, look at that with the additional responsibilities we'd be taking on in the savings and kind of look at that and we can have?
Yeah.
Plan help with that or?
I, I don't, again, I, for me, it was easy, simple math for me to do, um, because I've been doing it for so long. I, again, I, if that's something that the board wants to give me a direction to do, we can involve it. I think we'd just be spending more money than we, we would need to be doing. Um, but, uh, luck, it, whatever the board would like, I would be more than happy to do.
Brandon, oh, sorry. One, you know this stuff inside and out. Um, I don't. The one thing about financials that impact this township that maybe others don't have is that we have, um, only a percentage, I think 1,600, um, water and sewer customers, is that correct?
Or 600.
Okay, so we have some subset that would realize those savings. Got it. Sounds great. Simon, water and sewer. So it sounds great. Um, but we do have a number of people that are on wells and septic that would have to pay the taxes or element of that and would not realize the savings.
So we are an enterprise fund, so we only function off of the water and sewer collection of money that we take in. So all residents that are not part of the water and sewer district, we do not collect any funds from.
Right.
We are separate from the general fund.
But, um, so, so these capital improvements.
Would be paid for by the water.
Would be paid for. I said you knew a lot more. So today. Thanks, Brandon.
So Brandon, this is the first time I'm hearing about this idea. So it kind of comes as a surprise.
The?
So we would need, I would need, and I think others would need a lot more information.
For the back, for the utility garage and factoring and?
Yes.
Yeah, so it, it was, again, you know, trying to get support for the utility garage and move forward to not contracting out so many things and bringing it in-house has been kind of a hush, hush thing. Uh, because we, we are.
A hush, hush thing?
Like it's, it's a big ambitious thing and, uh, trying to get support for it. Um, we're trying to go through multiple steps. And so the first step, you know, I got re-asked to do the first step is go do the field trip, take people out to the, to the sites and show everybody what's going on, take us to Superior Township. And then we were gonna talk to the board and trustees about if, if they liked what they saw and they thought it was something that was feasible for this township, then we would start more discussion with, you know, what equipment we would need, why we would need it, what would be the impact on the department, what more personnel would we need, how would the operations change? Um, and that kind of stuff. So we, we would have got more into it. But we've been, you know, I, it's been something that I've been discussing for a year now. Um, and it's just been really slow moving, so I just wanted to take it step by step because that's the direction I've been given. And so I didn't want to speak too much of it because there's so much that is not answered. Uh, how, it's just unfortunate that the capital improvement plan has started before that, has moved forward too much, so you're hearing about it now without there already being too much action towards the utility garage. So it's, it's just really slow moving and we're just trying, you know, the, my direction is just to make sure we do it right. And so we're just trying to go through a process. And so as soon as we got through that process more, we would have, I would really, you know, a lot more information based on what, if the board was okay with moving forward with it.
I, I will now make a comment. I think we just gave a signal to Murphy to be ambitious in her planning. So to be consistent, your ambitious planning is exactly what we're asking for.
Yeah, and it's just.
So you don't have it all vetted out. I, I think we have to recognize that because we just said, get it in the plan and we refine it as we go. So I think I think.
Yeah, so.
Exactly what we want.
Christie's been really helpful. We, we set up the, uh, initial walkthrough to the outside, you know, the outbuildings as we call them, the booster stations, the pump station, um, other land that we own. And then we were gonna go to Superior Township. So she's been inviting people to do that. That was the initial, initial first step. And then from there, um, if there was enough support, um, from the board and, you know, I would, I would ask for the next step to be approved and we, you know, we just continued on that path until we, we decided that was something that we want to do or not do. And then as, as more direction was given, I would fully vet all the numbers as the board would like and, um, we could get a lot better firm answer on the cost savings and changes to the operation, the different licensing the guys are gonna need. And, and, you know, it's, it's not that complex as far as on the operation side. It's very simple. Um, it's just a couple of licensing, uh, things that would change, but, uh, we already have the personnel to do it. It's not a complicated task and it would save a lot of money.
And I, I, I think it's, it's, it's great if we could kind of look at these things, vector truck, bobcat vehicles, what you're calling kind of a utility garage, sounds like we're gonna have a tour of what that means. Um, it sounds like you have a proposal for a particular location, which I think, um, is, you know, certainly something that warrants its own discussion if we were to decide to do this. But, but I think for me, no matter, you know, how inspired I'll feel at a utility garage, which I plan to feel inspired, but no matter how excited or inspired I feel, I'm still gonna need like analysis and information that there's a need that we're not gonna be, you know, taking on undue risk or uncertainty. Um, I referenced the fire services guidance committee because we went through kind of, what are our standards? What are we trying to do? We're trying to provide, you know, safe, you know, quality water and sewer, you know, services for people. And also, as we know, anything we put in the capital plan, you know, does go to the rate study, you know, and is one of the drivers of the rates. And that's kind of the, we do the capital plan, we do the budgeting, then we do the rate study where we adjust rates. And so, um, it's certainly the, the three and a half million dollar utility garage, it is a significant number that's new. Um, and I'm not saying that there would or would not be cost savings in the future. We'd have to.
Yeah, and I would pose that this, that three and a half million, I, I know you've heard me say before is that, um, based off of what I'm seeing, I would not include that into the C I, or the rate study. I don't think that there would be any need for, based off the funds that we're seeing, the interest rate that we're returning on our funds that are already, um, out there gaining interest, the TAP fee connections that were.
I mean, and that, that's really determination for, for our finance team, you know, and I know you were very involved in it. You'll be very involved with that update, but certainly three and a half million dollars of capital cost is significant.
Yeah.
And would be significant. There aren't extra pots of money. There isn't, you know, when, when they look at the rate study, they're looking at the full fund balance and everything. There's not some additional revenue that's not considered when that's done. So I, I don't, I don't understand.
So based off of the TAP connection fees that we receive for developments coming in and projecting those, based off the interest that we're receiving from loans that are already put out there, or not loans, but money that we're put in, in a bank and we receive interest on there, we receive, we, so far this year, we've received a significant amount of money um, that we have not accounted for. So all that money that we can, that I'm looking at that hasn't been accounted for can be used at this point in time to build the building. Plus, we have significant, significant funds left in the sewer fund, uh, based off the last rate study that we did. We still have projected 7 million dollars left after the six-year, um, cap plan.
Brandon, Brandon, we just, all of that's considered at the time of the rate study. Uh, and, 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 and you know that and it sounds like you're ready for that conversation and that'll be a good one. But it's, it's, I don't think it's, um, I don't think we can sincerely say that we would put something in our capital plan and not consider it as part of a, a rate study. I mean, I can't.
I think as we move to the next item.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, this is the discussion about capital improvement. And Brandon, you have others, other things on the list.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Um, manhole and manhole lining and sewer pipe, sewer main lining. So this was, uh, money that we set aside last budget that we're continuing on. So this is, as the TV goes on with, uh, pipeline management, um, we would have that footage reviewed. Based off of that footage, there would be some things that we would need to line to prevent, um, inflow and infiltration into our system, which would reduce, um, how much flow we're sending to Ann Arbor. Um, you know, so it would help us retain more REUs for development in the, in the township, in the Jackson Porter area that's been proposed for the sewer district. Um, so that is money that we are still forecasting. Uh, we do know that we do have one significant repair, um, the sinkhole that was caused, um, in front of Jackson Road Pump Station, um, was due to a manhole issue. Um, and once we looked at it, it was, um, recommended that we do get that line. Um, so we actually have started those talks with pipeline management. Rich actually went out there today, um, to get those initial conversations. It is much cheaper to do multiple feet or manholes of lining at once to save the cost for them to come out here and do the work. So we will try as much as possible to hold off on this specific one until we can get more accumulation of projects. Um, and we would, we would present that to the board at the time, or I would, um, when it was time to present all the quotes for all the projects that need to be done and, and get a certain amount authorized, um, by the board to get it taken care of. Jackson Road Pump Station Generator, um, this is a, a popular one. This was like the high priority when I got here as, as far, as far as, uh, taking care of things. Um, the board already authorized the design and engineering work that was approved. We did get that stuff back from O H M. Um, then the board authorized us to get quotes. Uh, we did get the quotes. Uh, Huron Valley Electric came in at 271,000 dollars. Uh, and the board did approve them to do the work, uh, next fiscal year, um, is when that is being planned. The generator has been, um, purchased with approved funds by the board. Um, it is a lengthy process to get that made, so we're thinking right now that's gonna be coming in in April or May. And so that's, we'll be getting on it right away as soon as it gets here. Uh, Jackson Road Pump Station upgrades, this is a ballpark number, the best that O H M could provide. Um, there's multiple different things that could happen with these funds. Um, guaranteed is that we need to upgrade our pump sizes in our current Jackson Road Pump Station to accommodate more flow to the station. The other money, um, we haven't split up a little bit better now. We have, um, 120,000 in 2025 and then another 120,000 in 2026 that is being proposed. So the, the first thing is to.
Five million each.
And then five million the subsequent years, correct. So the first thing is to look into exactly what we need to do to resolve our issue with not having redundant source to the city of Ann Arbor if our main was to have a failure. Knowing that we only have one way to feed to the city of Ann Arbor and not do something about it at some point in time, it would be really frowned upon by Eagle, knowing that this is something that is very likely could happen and we'd be put in a bad situation if we didn't have a redundant source or, or better way to protect the environment if this was to happen. So with the board's approval, we'd be working with O H M to initially start figuring out the best solution for Silo Township to move forward. Um, and then based on what they, their best recommendation is and, and me agreeing with it and the board agreeing with it, um, depending on the cost, we would, we would bond with, uh, Eagle for a low-interest loan over 20 years, um, to keep the cost lower and, uh, you know, move along with the project that is being proposed at that time.
Brandon, are those 120,000, so about 240,000 you're kind of estimating for, for plan during?
Yeah, so the first thing would be the planning phase and then at some point, yeah, we would do the design and engineering work and then send that out for a contractor to, um, submit bids for. And then the following two years would be when we'd get the work done.
That's, that's major. I mean.
Yes.
If the 10.2 million is anywhere close, and this was, this, this item was in last year's capital plan and this was one of the major reasons we had drove up our capital cost to adjust rates.
Brandon, do you think that their solution is a big, the lack of a better technical term, a big tank or another pipe?
You know, they're, they're kind of up in the arms. I've kind of heard a couple of different things, um, increasing the wet well size that we currently have, so that's the main inflow structure that we have just outside of our pump station so that it can accommodate more gallons before it actually enters into our station through our pumps. Um, that's really just more or less a short-term solution. I think right now, my best guess is we get two days or a day and a half maybe of storage in that wet well before we're gonna have a.
Pick something in two or three hours, not greater. Pick something in two or three hours, not greater.
It's gonna, yeah, so. Um, they still think that that's gonna be part of the solution, then I heard a redundant um force main to to Ann Arbor so that we can switch to it. Um, if our main one um breaks, we just turn a valve, it forces it to that second sewer main. And then it pumps it all the way to Ann Arbor and we. Can relax and take time to fix what we need to fix without freaking out. Um, there's other ways, we can also put in a bunch of bypasses on the sewer main. Um, so that we can just bypass from one manhole to the next above ground. Um, much quicker and safer, you know, um. Then there's also been small talk about a secondary pump station. Um, based on the fact that if you have a secondary force main and you're not using it all the time, um. Matt Kennedy from O H M is telling me that. H U S gas um eats it quite a bit quicker and then you're kind of destroying uh your second main much quicker than you should be. If you're not using enough. So there's still a lot to go into looking in the best solution. Um, seeing as how we have such a bad H U S issue in our system as well, so this is. Allowing them to actually, or whoever we decided to look into this situation for us. Is, we're just trying to appropriate the right funds for them to fully figure out all the options and the best options for us, so we can make the best decision. Number five is also a carryover from last year. It's the air relief valve repair or replacement. So we have done. One major one, a few years ago, I wasn't here for it, that was a little, was it right under a million dollars, I believe I heard. So this was, that was a full structure replacement, they dug up the area, they put a new concrete structure in there. They replaced the A R V re- relief valve entirely. Um, and that came in around a million, I am still in works with O H M and also Kennedy Pump, Kennedy Solutions. To look at these A R Vs and get a second opinion from Kennedy on what condition these are in. And if we need a full structure replacement, the structure itself. Um, is in bad shape that they, you know, actually walked down into, it's kind of like a manhole structure, um, but. Is a structure itself entirely bad? Or do we just need to replace just the air relief valve itself, what what is the extent of the project that we really need to do? Um, so that we can get better numbers for the C I P um and prepare better. Um, and doesn't need to be all four of these, um. This quickly, can we spread them out a little bit more so it doesn't impact us as much? So those are questions I'm still getting. But based off of O H M's recommendation and their knowledge of the system, this is what they best. Um, this is what we're we're working with, this is the best knowledge that we have so far. Metering and, um, so metering study. So this was also proposed last year, it is a carryover. So basically, um, we're doing a, we're proposing a metering study to evaluate how much flow is going through the sewers. Um, it'll help us give a better R E U calculation. Um, for our side of things, but also know what we have left as far as secu- to sewer capacity with the Ann Arbor contract. And let us know how quickly we need to renegotiate if that's something that the board wants to do, if they want to ask for more sewer capacity.
Brandon, why, why is that work take place in the first two years, but then not again until twenty nine thirty?
So what they're proposing, um, and again, it. Things could change, but what they're proposing is that they do it now. And see exactly where we are, and they thought that it would be also wise of us to do it another three or four years down the road. Um, not that that we always have to do that, um. Based on the first round of doing it, it could give O H M and myself enough information, the board enough information to decide what we want to do. Um, but uh also, it was also recommended if we find a lot of things that we have to line. As far as our sewer main or manhole structures. Um, we could negate a lot of that extra flow getting into our system that Ann Arbor has to treat. And if we do find a significant amount of that, we could re-meter. And it could show us a much less amount of REUs that we're taking up compared to the first time we studied it. So that is another reason why they were proposing us do it. Uh, perhaps if we don't find a lot of things that we need to line, um, we may not propose to do that. We'll have to see if it makes sense uh over the next few years of what we find with our tele- televising. Um, Jackson Road Valve Meter Pit, I initially thought we were going to take care of this in the fall of twenty twenty five. Uh, based off of some easement issues, some coordination with Ann Arbor and talking with O H M. We think getting the design and the engineering stuff taken care of this year. Dealing with it, you know, communicating with Ann Arbor about our intentions to do this, talking with about. Getting a bigger easement to put a a better pit in there. Um, it looks like this project will be planned this year coordinated with the city of Ann Arbor. And then officially taking care of the following year um with the board's permission. And this would be replacing the main valve feed. From Jackson Road into Silo Township, it's our original valve. Um, and this would be updated with a variable flow drive. So it, instead of being fully open or fully closed, it will always fluctuate uh based on the demand that our water tower needs and our. And our residents need in our water district. Um, and it's, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry, that was kind of.
Sounds like there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, a bigger easement and things like that, so. Who's who's helping you with that, is that kind of like the conversations?
With O H M.
With O H M, but who's helping like interface with, do you need help from, you know, Kathy or other board members?
Yeah, certainly, I think when we get to, yeah, I know, she's part of the, she's part of the meeting, so.
That was legit.
I know.
She would definitely be part of those conversations for sure, in our utility, um, monthly meetings that we have. If, once, once uh this is approved and. We we decide who we're going with, uh, the design and engineering and looking at that type of stuff. As soon as we started to have those initial conversations of planning it, this would be a hot topic right on our our meeting minutes. And of course, uh, Kathy would be there and then also I think Dylan was even invited to the next one. So this would definitely be a hot topic for, that would probably recur every month. Up until the project actually happened, it would be, it'll always be an update. Water reliability study, so. I believe every six years we are required uh by Eagle to submit this update. Um, basically, it goes over our whole water suit, our water system, um. I have never really seen a an an actual water reliability study, the way that they're proposing it. Um, I think it was always attached to my stuff, but all I ever seen was the asset management portion of it, you know, the C I P plans. What needs to be taken care of in the system, because that's what I was assigned to do, uh, so that will also be included in this uh water reliability study update. But then there's a whole lot more of of an engineering study that has to go um on in. As far as the study as well, so that Eagle knows exactly. A whole lot more about our actual water distribution system from an engineering standpoint. Um, if Matt's still here, he had to have a better. Um, idea, well, he would know exactly the information that um would be in there for sure. But again, we, we just have always just stated that this needed to happen, we haven't had full discussions of exactly. What things were gonna be in there, um, so. Um, so that is forecasted to be done, um, twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven.
That looks like there's a G I S. Updates, I'm not, I'm sure there, I I think G I S updates might be something. We consider as part of the budget, I don't know, I I'll defer to Ally on if it's capital, but I think it's.
More or less, it it very well could be, so more or less, um, I think what I'm proposing this year, um. In further talks, it would be a little bit less than the fifty thousand, but uh. There are some, there are three more apps that I've just discussed with Jake from O H M.
Yeah, I think, I I would think, I mean, unless Ally. Um, but but I think we have other kind of software and G I S applications we'll cover in the budget, maybe not in the capital.
Okay, absolutely.
We'll keep, keep.
Yeah, I just, because it was over the fifty grand, or sorry, twenty five thousand, I put it on there, but absolutely.
So I do have one question about the utility vehicles, just the trucks. Okay, Brandon, we have, how many trucks, we have one truck for parks, how many trucks do we have? For utilities right now?
We have mine, Rich's, Zach's, Dave. Mine, Rich.
Don't we have six trucks for utilities right now? And don't we have six people who drive trucks?
I think we have five trucks.
You think we have five trucks?
Yeah, so we have mine, we have Rich's, we have Dave's. We have Zach's and we have Matt's, so we have five trucks, we have six. Five real field staff, I still go out in the field quite a bit to help them out and to check on developments and stuff like that, meet contractors. So Ray, um, is the most recent hire, he doesn't have a truck. Um, and so, quite often we are using that F two fifty. Um, and the F two fifty was loaned to building and maintenance for Kevin when he was here to do ground meat.
But that is the sixth utility truck.
That is.
Yeah, we got to six.
Yeah, we do have, yes, we have.
That we've paid for with water and sewer.
Absolutely, we have six.
Six trucks, I mean, six people who drive.
Correct, and I'm, we're just proposing that we trade in the F two fifty, because it is a two thousand and six, so it's. It is really old, um, we are constantly having breakdown issues, um, it is extremely rusted. Um, it doesn't look. It has, it it leaks exhaust inside the cab, so it's not something that we should be driving around with. Um, and so. Just because we didn't have another vehicle for Kevin to drive around and and haul the trailer to, to mow. And to take care of the other outbuildings, um, go get supplies that he needed, we were loaning it to him, um. So that he had, actually had a vehicle so he could do that stuff. So I'm proposing at this point in some times that we traded in, get the six. You know, have a six vehicle so that Ray can actually have a daily vehicle to use. And then we would actually need to get the building and grounds person an actual truck so they could um continue to do their job.
Okay, if you state that there's carbon monoxide in the cab, can we get a a monitor for them, please?
Yeah, that was kind of troubling to just.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just found out that the, a couple of weeks ago, we haven't been driving it since, we haven't really drove it a whole lot at all since Kevin's left.
Well, can we put a monitor to see what's going on, levels? Yeah, they can't be that expensive, right, a CO two monitor?
I'm sure it's not that expensive. I, I wouldn't understand the point of doing it though, on my end.
Because you're gonna use the vehicle, so.
I have not been using the vehicle, I wouldn't propose to use the vehicle anymore, is what I was suggesting. Not saying that you guys obviously can tell me no, but I was just saying that's that's what I'm suggesting.
So that's a two thousand and six, you said?
Yes. Yeah.
And and I'll say, you know, and and Brandon, you've done a great job of getting the team out in the field doing proactive maintenance. Out there and I understand that we have needed more staff and more vehicles in order to do that, and I support that, I really do. I'll I'll also say though, the idea of having like, you know, I I do expect people to share vehicles. Um, you know, between buildings and grounds and utilities or parks, I mean, not to the detriment of anything, but. This is where we need our, you know, kind of vehicle policy, so that we're really, really managing our our. Our assets well, so I I I would like to see some, you know, proposed sharing wherever reasonable. Particularly because the buildings and ground person, you know, is mostly in the building.
Yeah, totally, and as, we we do share, um, when we can, however, to be frank with you, I don't. Think to run the utility department, the best way would be to share vehicles. Um, on a continuous basis. The best way to run the utility department, anywhere you go, is to have each vehicle have their own vehicle and to separate them each day. That way, whenever there's an emergency or a work order that comes up, or an emergency staking issue, there's so many things that pop up. To have to stop two people doing a job that is already assigned or already have a a appointment with at a house. And to take both of them out.
Sure, but but you're, what what you have now are six vehicles for six drivers, and you're proposing that we replace one of those vehicles.
Correct.
Okay.
I just want to make a general comment and see if you agree, um. So many of these expenses. Like the Jackson Road Pump Station Upgrade, the Jackson Road Pump Station Generator. The metering studies, uh, many of those are. Investments in our current system.
Yes.
And they're investments in. Our current status quo with the city of Ann Arbor for water and sewer services.
So the metering study, um, the update to the Jackson Road Pump Station, yeah. Um, did you say the the generator was one of them? Um, I don't know if that exactly correlates with the city of Ann Arbor, that's more of like a. Security for the township to make sure that we have a a an actual backup that's in good standing.
I need it to support the system that we currently have.
Um, absolutely, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
And just, you know, I heard about the proposed. Consideration of a new way of doing things tonight, sort of for the first time, and I'm just saying. We have a lot, we we are going to have to consider that we have a lot invested in our current system right now. That's all.
Yeah, the valve, the valve pit, um, um, valve being updated, that is a big investment to our. Um, and as more, not that this is anything new, but anytime we get that P U D and we, this is, uh. We we haven't had great direction of exactly where we want those funds to be focused, but since. The biggest portion of our rate study, as as Jessica stated, was our pump station. That's where I've been advocating, we get um those, you know, community benefits too, to help reduce that cost on the township's half, and it is. Most of the P U Ds that have been being pushed through, um, or approved rather, have been big R E U multi-building. Um, residential families, so that is something that would specifically go one and one anyways, you know, two hundred resident. Communities is a big impact on our pump station, so it's also a, you know, a thing that correlates with that kind of a P U D. So, um, yeah, I'm definitely doing all I can to also limit the cost as much as possible to the water and sewer residents that. Are kind of having to share a little bit more of the burden of that cost. Based on the things that are getting approved in the system, it's making us have to do that much quicker, this this big investment. So it is, yeah, it's tough.
Thanks.
There anything else on on the list here that we haven't covered?
Uh, the security cameras, um, the security cameras was something that was a carryover from last year. They're proposed to be on, um, one camera located at the pump station. Um, one, one camera at at each one of the booster stations and one camera at the water tower, and that's gonna be. Um, driven more or less by I, uh, Chris from I T and Julio helping with that, that's more or less. Uh, they're gonna be basically the ones that I talk to, but they're gonna be driving the project, um, and just kind of let me know what's what's going on from time to time.
Brandon, the engineering standards, this is. Like in my mind, this is priority one, two, and three. Getting engineering standards done, I mean, they're not been updated since two thousand and four, year over year. We kind of talk about them, whether it's from the point of environmental sustainability, or if you talk about investing in our system. By improving our engineering standards, you know, we're able to affect. A lot of change with all of how everything is developed to bring up to our standards, um. So what is it gonna take to get that done this year, or at least started?
Uh, support from the board and, just like I did last year, everything that was passed, that I was in control of. Has been done, or it's gonna be completed before this year, so you have my word, if this is something that is passed, that April first, I'll call. Um, O H M, get on the phone and, um, get a quote.
Yeah, for sure, and Brandon, even before you got here, this was in the budget year over year. And it wasn't done, I'm not sure why, I don't know if it's because we've not, you know, specked out what we need, not put it out to bid. Um, so even even before you, Brandon.
I think it was just the the push from the director. So you guys can only do so much, and then when you, when you hand down the work to the the director of utilities to do it, then it's on. That person to make sure it's. That person to make sure it's followed through with, so. I don't know, I can't speak for what all other projects were going on for the prior utility directors, I just know that. This is something that's real easy for me to get started. We're not doing the work in-house, um, so it's just a couple of phone calls, get the real price to you guys in front of the board to approve the work to be done. And let the, let the engineers do it, um, and then we just sit back and wait for the book to show up. So it's not really difficult on our end.
Just work, we need our engineering.
Yes, yeah, but it is a huge book and it is extremely technical. Um, so there's, there's no way to do this in-house, absolutely not, unfortunately.
No, no, that's fine.
And then the water meter replacement, this is a continuation, I changed the uh cost amount for the first. For these next two first years. Uh, based on the work we've been getting done in the field, I had a goal of seven hundred and fifty meters each year so that we could be done. By, in in a five-year period. Uh, we probably really only focus really hard, like four months out of this year. Um, and we already got eight hundred meters taken care of. Um, so we are well on our way, um, we. If if we really pushed hard, we would absolutely run out of the four hundred thousand dollars that was allocated to do this. Um, just keep in mind too, um, with this amount, this this four hundred thousand dollars isn't going just towards replacements. We, this is just the meter fund. All in one, so when we get new services, new builds that come in. Those meters are also going to those um addresses, so. Um, not all four hundred thousand dollars actually went to meter replacements. There's a lot of developments and new houses that were built that we had to put these meters in, and of course, we do get that money through the tap connections that they pay. Um, it's included in their tap fee for residential buildings, it's nineteen thousand eight hundred thirty-four, so we get that three seventy-five back. Um, through those funds, um, one way or another. Um, so this year I proposed that we we bumped it up to five hundred thousand. Um, we have more developments that are proposed, we still have more developments that are um building. And then based off of what I see that our workers could get done, I think the five hundred thousand, if it's, if it's something that's feasible when we look at that. Um, with Plant Moran, I I I definitely think it is based off of our fund situation. That would be a recommendation of mine.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like the sooner we get it done, the better, so as, I wouldn't want the budget to be artificially kind of limiting.
That'd be great, yeah.
Just kind of whatever you think, however fast you think you and your team can get it done, propose the funds necessary to get it done.
The way that we're going, we could. Especially, you know, we had a couple of different projects that we had to get rid of, you know, take care of the line identification. Um, we we stopped doing meter replacements completely for a couple of months. I can almost see this as a four-year project, if we, if we allocate the money correctly and and can uh. Can accumulate the money as we needed to to keep the project going, um, that'd be really ideal, that'd be. With new builds and everything that's proposed, that'd be probably around thirty-five hundred meters replaced in four years, or new ones put in, that would be. That'd be one heck of an achievement for the for the field tax to do. Um, so they've been doing a great job, that's, that's all on the field tax. And uh Belisha helping um schedule those, uh, so it's nothing but the team that's uh. Accomplishing that for our utility department. That was, that was all.
Well, thank you so much.
Alrighty, you guys have a good evening.
Thank you, Brandon, it's Brendan. Okay, who's next?
Well, well, Brandon did have a couple more, building.
All the building grounds. I need to stay up. Parking lot, so that's scheduled twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine. Based off the condition of the current parking lot, this is uh something I had O H M just quickly glance at the parking lot with me. Um, so this would just be milling two inches of the current parking lot, not a full. New parking lot milling, the the top two inches, resurfacing it, um, with new asphalt and moving on. Um, this could be pushed further down um in the years, um, if it, if it's. Not continuing to crack and lead to more issues quicker. So it's just a placeholder, we think this is probably gonna be the best time to do it, but it it might be pushed down a couple of years if we have, if it doesn't make sense.
Should we wait until the HVAC system and the heat and air?
Yeah, yeah, would absolutely, yeah.
After, but my question would be. Aren't they gonna have to tear up part of the parking lot to do that?
Absolutely.
They're gonna have to budget something, maybe not a capital issue, but just budgeting.
Yeah.
I think from Caleb, that the cost of the HVAC also enc- um. Encompasses some of this asphalt replacement, yeah, so it is included in in the general fund in in that sense.
There's talk of the the pathway we're planning, there's talk of, we've heard about two different potential garages. And so, there's a lot.
Yeah, the utility garage gets passed and it goes back, yeah, there's so much that could happen. Um, HVAC replacement, I realize that the estimated township share needs to be changed.
Yeah.
Uh, to reflect the grant in the. Federal, oh man. I'm kind of losing my mind.
Maybe Christine, Kristen.
Yeah, we can get that to accurately reflect. Uh, we allocated three hundred and fifty thousand last year. Um, towards the HVAC, I believe, and then this year is the four hundred to get to the seven hundred and fifty. Um, where we think that's gonna be the initial out-of-pocket cost. And then we would receive those funds on the back end and get reimbursed. Okay, and then office furniture was just added, but uh, of course, this makes sense. Um, you guys all know it, you guys have been discussing it, um, adding the new furniture to the front. Um, main area to accommodate. Oh, not every, okay, I thought more people, I thought more people were, um.
Figuring out office space to allow for more employees to sit up front.
Yeah.
More cubicles.
I understand that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
And. Yeah, your office, yes, would you share with?
I, there was some concern from the board when, I just, it's not in here, I just want to quickly touch it, cause there was some concern about. Um, additional cost to moving staff to the utility side of the building. Um, when we do the HVAC work, I did talk with Chris from I T. Uh, went over potential seating arrangements, Christie, seeing that. He does not believe that there's gonna be a significant at a uh cost at all to do additional wiring. Um, to, you know, to get the computers all set up in the areas that we were discussing. So he doesn't feel that there's any need to add anything to the C I P, there's no significant cost with that. We do think it's feasible to to accommodate everybody back there, so.
Did you go a little bit more?
I'm sorry, okay.
At the bottom?
Um, Christie and you are each proposing another vehicle.
Oh, yeah.
Christie?
Oh. A township vehicle for assessing and code enforcement, um. So they don't have to drive their personal vehicles when they're out in the field. To do assessing and for code enforcement.
And it is not a cost savings for the township, we've looked at kind of how much we reimburse people for. So it would not be to save money that we would do this, just to put that out there. The request from code enforcement and assessing was more around kind of comfort and safety of not driving their own personal vehicle. Um.
Or for employees that have leased vehicles. So they didn't have to put miles on their lease cards also.
I mean, so this would be new to have kind of a building and grounds or a general use vehicle. That would be new to have kind of a general fund vehicle, it would be a a new ongoing expense and expectation for the township, so. I'm approaching these cautiously.
No, yeah, I mean, this was brought to me to put forward.
Yeah, I had more, cause I was initially involved with it last year, um. And we do have that vehicle policy that um, that the board wanted. Um, that has been done as far as my part.
Haven't come to the board yet.
Right, it's been, well, it's been done for over six months. Um, sitting with uh Aurora reviewing it. Um, so it is, it, we did collab with Joyce, with uh Sean. So, but the main, the main push from it was from assessing and and code enforcement, as Jessica stated. Uh, I hear often, even even lately, uh, the displeasure with using their own vehicles in the assessing department. Um, and so that was the main push for it.
Yeah, what we need to think about as a board too, is we have the expectation that people drive their personal vehicle sometimes for work, work. And I wouldn't want to lose that expectation, cause we're never gonna provide a tariff for everybody to do everything, so.
FYI, I R S comes up with a number.
And we use that number.
And that's.
It's a maybe a broader conversation, but I just wanted to.
And I wasn't completely done, cause the only other thing that I think the board should know is that. As I understand Jessica saying that we would expect towns, you know, township employees to use their own vehicle. It is at their blessing, it is not something that can be mandated. So just take that in consideration, that if the assessing department or the code enforcement officer decided to say no. Yeah, you can't force them to use their own personal vehicles. So that's something that they're doing on their own will, to be nice.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Yeah, it can be a job, but.
I think it is.
I I would doubt that it's in their job posting though. You could put it in there maybe, then then it would be. Oh, that I understand that, so, then that would negate that issue, but I, I can't say that it's completely that way right now.
Couple of questions of fact, that number one is every single employee of the township a driver on our insurance policy?
Everybody who drives for the township is covered by our insurance policy.
Does that include their personal vehicles when they're driving for township business?
Yes, it does.
Okay, making sure.
It does, our insurance policy does cover that when they're. Driving, and as we are updating the handbook, you'll notice some sections. Related to, you know, the kind of regular background checks, the driver's license checks that we do on people who regularly drive.
And they have to pay their own fines.
But it's just, it's just sort of a a question about kind of use, and you know, we keep talking about, you know. Maybe vehicles are expensive, they're expensive to maintain, they're, um, you know.
For everyone purchased, um, you're adding string of maintenance for the general fund. Between insurance.
Right, and then, and then vehicle storage and all this stuff that needs to come with vehicles.
So it sounds like this is a bigger discussion for another time, so we could, yeah, really delve into it.
For sure, but but I would say, you know, these, you know, at our next meeting is where we'll be delivering. On what stays in and comes out.
Okay, well, a a question on this then, is. Is this the one for building and grounds, I think this is to Christie, is this township vehicle?
Grounds is.
Is, so I included it under my um, my utilities.
Are we double counting that one then?
I I put it under, I put it under building and. The first uh section that we talked about, was building.
There's a utilities pickup truck.
There's a utility replacement, and uh, yeah, so you're proposing two trucks, one to be a replacement.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
Thanks, Brandon.
Christie, so the township vehicle, that one is driven by assessing and.
Yeah, assessing, code enforcement.
It could be buildings and grounds, right? I don't understand why not.
It doesn't have, it could be any type of vehicle, if you wanted, if the board decided to get a vehicle that could be used by assessing. Code enforcement and building in grounds to hold the trailer.
You would just have to, just just choose a different type of vehicle, you couldn't choose a cheaper vehicle, you'd have to probably get a truck. The one that I'd be proposing for building in grounds would also be capable of of plowing. Um, the township parking lot and the fire department. Um, so it it can absolutely be one vehicle for both. As long as they can adequately share it, then it's totally feasible.
Um, well, at least for that, thank you.
Could we take a break?
Sure, um, is there a motion to take a break?
Can can we make it a five-minute break? Back here by nine fifty.
That's fine, okay. Your second? Okay, yes, all in favor? See you in five.
Uh, what do we tell the first? What what do we tell?
You should be able to, you should be able to.
Okay, was it Kathy, were you the first, and then?
Thank you, sorry, he's got.
He spoke some letters.
Yes.
Engineering study for that area.
Park Road?
Yeah, Park Road, yeah. I think it was over a year ago, wasn't it?
Yeah, we're waiting, we're waiting on that.
Yeah, so they're ready to, you know, bring that forward, um, what we are.
And by Park Road, you mean from where it's gonna stop at Green Mountain Circle? Or from Cedar Ridge east to Zee, right? Got it.
And, well, and the plan was in the past not to do anything with that until, um, Trailwoods Development has finished there.
Yeah, no, this is, I get that this is a down-the-road-a-piece.
A little bit, yeah. Then, uh, let's see.
Jillian, I really like the, the roads planned, the roughly four hundred thousand each year. I mean, that, that's gonna allow us to do most, but not all of what's on the proposed list, I think, each year-ish, which is good. The Park Road, I, I, I'll be advocating to moving that down into the future. If, if we keep it on, I just, I wanna pave Park Road, but I, I don't, well, I don't know that we can support a million dollars of general fund to do it. We might be able to if we want to, but it's.
Well, we can even move this.
Turn something else.
Yeah.
And we can even move that from twenty twenty-five, twenty-six to have that open there, and then the twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight. So I did talk with Matt Parks about, you know, this, and I said, what is a guesstimate? And he gave, you know, two million, three hundred thousand. So we just divided up between the two. And of course, this is just a plan, which we can always change. It's going, as we know, we're gonna have to finish that project.
So R, so RDO two is park road and path or sidewalk paving? I don't, I don't, I don't care if we call it a sidewalk or non-motorized path.
Yeah, we can add that to the.
Yeah, and then.
Let's change the title. But, um, I think it should be done sooner rather than later, because we're gonna have fifty-five mile an hour asphalt coming down from Stabler eastbound toward Zeeb, and that's gonna go into, to dirt road. And it's gonna be a safety thing at some point.
Yeah, but that needs to be finished first before.
I agree, but don't we think it's gonna be finished next summer?
Well, we thought it was gonna be finished this year.
No, but I, I know, but don't we think, I, uh, don't, doesn't our best data suggest that it's gonna be done next semester? Next semester?
Next semester, what?
In the middle of winter.
Yeah, you know, but.
Well, yeah, I mean, you're in school.
I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, no, I'm sorry.
Uh, he just paid his dog.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, and we, we, again, this is something we can just keep it up here for this year or move it. I mean, as.
I think it's gonna be resident-driven based on safety. And even if we don't pave the road, should we at least put a pathway in to get people off of that darn road? And onto a pathway.
Two point three million dollars.
Yeah.
Is what I'm saying.
I know, I, I.
Million dollars.
Let's.
Yeah, we need funding sources for.
I know, know that about it, and I don't know what grants are available or earmarks, uh, but, but, or what help from the legislature, but I, I think, I, I, but I think, I mean, there's just so much density there. There's the gallery, there's, there's a.
I agree, support.
I agree, support.
Identify.
What if we have Matt come and give the report?
Okay.
Yeah, that sounds great. So we just, we, we need to identify this one hundred percent township share. You know, I think, I think we, you know, need a, need a goal of, you know, we could put in some matching, but the majority has to be from elsewhere.
True, that's. And if we don't put things down in a plan, then we just don't.
Exactly. Right, it's really John's point, is when he didn't see it there, it was, where did the path go?
Right. Yeah, we'll lose it. So the other, uh, the sidewalk and bus stop, um, Dexter, Ann Arbor, Wagner, we've had some residents over, especially, especially after the gentleman was, um, killed. They, uh, they, they have a lot of concerns, um, for pedestrians and bus stops and whatnot. So this is a preliminary, um, review from OHM, just to, to kind of look at things. We do know that the, there's the bridge that goes over ninety-four that we will not be able to do anything with. It's the same issue we, we run across with the Zeeb Road and the Baker Road. But there's things that we can do to improve that area. Um, so that's where we would have the study, you know, from OHM, look at it. And then road improvements, oh, that's from the DDA. So the, the DDA money, they were looking, when we talked about it, it was more about the, the roads within the DDA. Still haven't figured out if the DDA is going to take care of their own roads, or if Road Advisory Committee, if that, they're gonna, you know, embrace that. So, but they did allocate hundred twenty thousand for roads over, you know, well, they, they said two years, because they thought the, the DDA was coming to an end at that point, you know? But anyways, um.
Can we have a better definition of that? Because.
Sure, we could put DDA Road Improvement Funds.
Or, or Jillian, would you imagine that, that WCRC Road Improvement Projects? That maybe, because that's where, like, I think the Road Advisory Committee and others kind of use that list to sort of analyze what's important.
Yes, but we've never included the DDA roads in our list.
Right, I'm wondering if we can just get one list from the Road Commission for the whole township, and then kind of like, use this one twenty, it'll be five, five hundred and twenty per year, five hundred and twenty thousand, for example, in the first year.
Yeah, but I don't think the DDA meant for that money to be used for the rest of the township.
Yeah, legally, yeah. Right, right, but just proportionate to the roads that are within.
And really, there's only one road in the DDA district that hasn't been improved, and that's Stabler.
Yeah.
North.
I think, e- either way, however you wanna think about it, as long as there's, I'm just thinking, who's gonna run point on this? Who's gonna run point on this? It's, if it gets kind of like, you know, there's kind of the holistic road improvements list, and then whatever portion is within the DDA is funded by the DDA.
Yeah, and the thing, um, so when you have roads that are just, uh, like, Dino Drive and Medley were just recently paved, well, you know, within, you've gotta maintain that, they're sealing, they really should do a sealant, um, within a year. And then you really need to put money aside, because eventually, they're gonna need more work. So, but we need to clarify, and this is the, the thing with the Road Advisor Committee and the DDA, we're back and forth about who, you know, do they want their own road, uh, road committee? So we're gonna figure all that out, okay? But what we do in the rest of the township should be its own plan. And, yeah. So if we could keep them separate, and I agree with, um, Kathleen, a better title, I guess? Maybe a DDA Road Improvement Funds? Or Road Improvement Projects?
Projects. And then, John, you wanted to talk about the sidewalks.
Yeah, maybe two phases. The first thing would be getting safely across Siyo Church from Oak Valley. Um, I see people that just walk across there unsafely. So maybe you connect Kensington Woods, which is that Caddo Association, Oak Valley, and then down the road, you connect Kensington with Upland Drive and all the density there. I, I think, and you do it in phases with, you know, uh, a, a grant, like we tried. Maybe we could keep trying to get a grant, um, uh, for the engineering and for part of the construction. But I just really think that where there are so many people, and it's a dangerous situation, that it should be a goal of ours to complete that sidewalk gap that connects to the library, to school.
Do we have any ballpark?
Matt Parks might, I don't know.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
Yeah, didn't he?
He created weight in on this before.
Well, it was, no, I don't think it was official, did we?
No, I think it was in preparation for a meeting with a lobbyist, somebody had.
He did a, he did a drawing.
Yeah.
Yeah, Matt did, and maybe, maybe Chris knows from the, the unsuccessful grant, which we blame on you, Chris.
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
Oh, no.
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. No, no, but.
Do you have any data on that, Chris?
The grant, gosh, I could go back and look real quick if you give me seconds. I don't wanna misquote what the number was.
But, but the grant.
Engineering, you're asking about the engineering?
Yeah, just for the engineering, right?
I could go look at the.
Okay.
That's okay, we, we, we can get them.
Fifty thousand, forty thousand, but I, I don't wanna get misquoted.
Okay, no, I, I, I mean, I guess I would ask that engineering be included sooner, and then down the road a piece, that, that the actual pathway and/or crossing, you know, the, the.
Maybe we can get other municipalities to bring them.
Can I ask the board members to please drive by there and look at the, the depth of the homeowners, their front yard?
Yeah.
It's twenty feet, maybe twenty-five feet, and they're gonna have this right in front of their living room. So I, I would think they would be opposed to it.
But it's a sixty-six foot county right-of-way.
Yeah, there's a right-of-way to it.
It's not like it's not the county's property already. And I don't know that I agree that it's twenty feet, but there is a road, there's a right-of-way.
Okay, John, I'll go measure it.
Okay.
It's very narrow.
I'm just saying, if you look at it from a, a resident impact, people that are homeowners there.
How about this, um, when do we allocate some money for a study? Have OHM do a study and bring that back to us?
Or an engineer. Let's use engineer.
I'm sorry, engineer study.
That's right, I'm, I'm just.
But, but this would be, I mean, if, if we were to pencil in a, a project for this to consider at our next meeting, it'd be fifty thousand dollars of engineering and FYE twenty-five, twenty-six from the general fund.
I just wanna say, Kathleen, there, there are other places to put a sidewalk other than where John referenced. So there's the other side of the street, Siyo Church Road.
That's Lowdy Township.
It is, but, um, I had told John this. I talked with the supervisor of Lowdy Township more than a year ago about was there any interest in exploring anything in a cooperative manner? And she said there was a board member on the Lowdy Board who was very interested in having that discussion. But then we never.
It's also Pittsfield, it's also Ann Arbor, there's a little bit of, there's a sliver of Ann Arbor Township, but it's also Ann Arbor City.
City, not Ann Arbor Township.
The Gore is Ann Arbor Township.
So is there somebody here?
The Gore, the Gore, G-O-R-E, is Ann Arbor Township. That's a freeway term. So if you look, if you look on the.
It's a weird thing.
Don't cross the Gore. You'll get a ticket.
Who's interested in kind of working on this? Like, writing up a little blurb? You, John?
Obviously, I'm really.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did notice that Lowdy Township had a very generous part of their general fund on roads last year, compared to, it was a lot of money, I thought.
Okay, so.
So they're interested in roads.
Yeah.
John, you were talking also, I, I think referencing further down on Siyo also?
Well, there's two, there's two issues. One, getting people who live in those nine, nine neighborhoods safely to the, to, to Oak Valley and the library and the city and to Target and all that stuff there.
Right.
Through walking and biking, but it's crossing the road. Now, with respect to, to, to Lowdy willing to fund sidewalks on that side, where a crossing gets put is entirely up to the Road Commission. Yeah, so, um, but the, we're beholden to them, uh, where, where things go.
So is there a second project? This sounds like kind of one project.
It's one project, but maybe it could be in two phases.
I know, initially, I thought I.
No, no, well, there's the Kensington, there's, there's getting people safely across the road there, and then getting people down the road to.
Gotcha. So Siyo, Siyo Church Sidewalk Project? I got it.
Siyo Church, yeah, Siyo, Siyo.
Oak Valley.
Yeah.
Siyo, Siyo Church Sidewalk Gap.
Valley intersection.
Okay, what are we calling it?
John's gonna decide.
I, no, I don't, Siyo Church Sidewalk Gap or, or crossing, Oak Valley Road Crossing?
Yeah.
And just draft up a little blurb, and we'll look at it as part of our potential general fund capital plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, does this wrap up our capital improvement plan discussion?
Yeah, so then I would just say, next steps, like, any more questions you have for department heads or for Ally or Finance, um, please send them. But our plan is to stay on track, is that we're going to deliberate and adopt a capital plan at our next meeting on January fourteen. So come prepared to say on, off, move a year forward or back, whatever it is.
Okay, um.
J four?
Yeah, I'm lost here.
J four?
Oh, yeah, J, okay, Jessica, you pulled this?
I did, I wanted to say Jean is fantastic, and I support her appointment. Um, I did want to, per rule ten point two, just close, um, a possible perceived conflict of interest. Um, Jean had donated to my legal defense fund. Um, and for this, uh, possible perceived conflict of interest, I wanted to request permission to abstain.
Sure, it's fine with me.
I would say yes, I thank you for bringing it up. I don't think you have to recuse yourself, um, uh, you know, but if you really want to, I'll report it.
So if, if somebody wanted to make a motion to allow me to abstain, they may.
I.
But that would be the next step.
Jessica Flintoff, be allowed to recuse yourself from voting on item J four based for the reasons stated on the trigger.
I'll support. And, okay, so all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
I move the appointment of Jean, um, under J four. Now that we're taking up J four, I would move the, her appointment.
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? And motion passes. Okay, just, I'm for Flintoff, sorry, this is yours.
J six, um, this is similar to a motion I've proposed each of the last two times we've had a compensation commission, just gotten a little more, um, detailed, does three things. Assign specific staff to work with the compensation commission to be transparent about we'll be supporting them. I propose Aurora and, um, the township attorney. Two, that we ask for return of separate determinations, we've done this in each of the two prior compensation commissions, that we get four separate determinations for each of the four offices. And then this is a new request, um, to request that the compensation commission provide recommendation on committee pay. To my knowledge, the townships never reviewed the pay of committee members in any systemic way. And you have the rates of each of the three committees that currently receive per meeting pay. So this would just be kind of a natural thing for the compensation commission to do, because they keep reviewing other jurisdictions, would come back to the board just as part of our budgeting consideration.
I think this is reasonable, I'm, I'm prepared to support it. I have, uh, questions about it, is that the third one is request for recommendations on committee pay. Committee would also include, uh, other committees that are not listed here.
That's what she means.
And, and so that's what I wanted to.
Yeah, and it could, and I wondered about that, Judy, because, you know, I think that.
Well, that's what you meant, that you wanted the other committees to be considered. You mean like Harson Pathways and F C?
Yeah.
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad we're talking about it.
I kept this open. I'm not saying here that I'm supporting that we suddenly start paying every committee member. Um, but certainly, if that's the recommendation of the compensation commission, I wanna hear it. So I, I was trying not to limit whatever they would find.
So what's the, what's the history of these getting paid in these dollar amounts?
I don't know. It's, it's been at least fifteen years.
Yeah.
Or twenty years, and so I don't know.
It's gone on for a long time. It's history, it's, the township has always done it. No, honesty is the best apology here.
No, and truly, Judy, I looked at one point to kind of figure out, like, where these came from. I, I have no record of where these came from.
I mean, this, this ends up, okay, two, two thousand, my, my hawkish ex-head says that we're paying these, but not these. And, 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 yeah, and so doesn't seem too equitable. And then, um, the second thing is, when I look at these amounts, and we say also include committees, this adds up to significant money. And, um.
Does this include special meetings?
Well, that, that's what it.
So, yeah, I was, I was, what I was trying to state, and I, I may not have done it. Like, put it on the table, like, is that I wanna know what other places do. Most places do pay some committees, but not other committees. Most do it by meeting, which is better than by hour.
See, when I looked at just, um, the Planning Commission Chair, I, not the person, the Planning Commission Chair, that, um, position has two meetings a month. And then twelve months, and you start bumping up against about half of what a trustee's paid.
Yes, and there's.
Kind of like seems a little.
That's why I thought it'd be appropriate for the compensation commission.
I totally agree, but I think we need to give them a little more, like, does it include?
Do we want them, say, so to kind of scope their recommendations? Because I just kind of put it, what are your recommendations, you know, open-ended? But are you saying we want recommendations only on?
No, I think a little more, I think we owe the compensation group a little more direction. Does committee, does committee equal committee and commissions? Can we offer them the opportunity to actually, um, reduce numbers?
Yeah, I mean, it's all recommendations. I, I meant it, like, globally, but.
And also, um, I under, I understand from asking a question, is that Board of Trustee members who attend these also get money for attending these meetings?
That's true, so, so, yeah, this is why I'm talking about it, so we can talk.
Okay, I, it's all known to me, it's like.
Well, that's because we never talk about it. So the other thing we never talk about is, is the planning commissioners, and, and this isn't wrong, but the, you know, pre-op meetings, they're paid to, they're paid when they attend pre-op meetings.
Oh, paid when, um, the meetings.
Well, that's from this quarter, I've been paying for this.
And then, um, the mem, members who serve on the board, who serve as Planning Commission member or ZBA member, get paid for that as well. And these are all employees of the township, they're all temporary employees, so the administrative, you know, just running the payroll, just quarterly for these, you know, it is some work. I mean, I'm not saying it's too much, I'm not putting it much, um, but it is some, well, it is some work, you know, attracting the. And so, so my, my thought is that, you know, we, and we could make it more plain, however you'd suggest, Judy.
Well, if we're gonna use the committee, that says to me, committee and commissions.
Okay, that's fine. First of all, um, so I believe in the statute for Planning Commission, there is something that says that members may be paid, now I'm going by memory, we'd have to look at that, and maybe some, like the CBA and the Board of Review.
These are pretty traditional.
Well, if it's in the statute, that, you know, that gives us more. But the other ones, if it's not in a statute somewhere or ordinance, then that would just be a saying, or, you know, whatever the recommendation is. The other thing is, is that the, the Board of, um, not the Board of Review, the Compensation Commission, they, they meet, they can, um.
Meet once.
No, they can meet up to fifteen times.
Yeah.
In forty-five days, so. Yeah, so that's, this is another thing, we have to, you know, um, how much time would it take for them to do the board? But then also look at every committee and, and, um, that type of thing.
I, I just thought if they're running comps, you know, I mean, looking at different things, you know, we, we could just, and maybe we could even just say recommendations regarding what other jurisdictions, which committees other jurisdictions pay, something like that.
Something like that.
Yeah, because I'd like to see a financial impact.
Does that scope it a little more, Jillian, so they don't get bogged down with too much work? Just come back with any, you know, survey of which, which committees slash commissions other jurisdictions pay, and, and what they pay.
You know, if I was still in that commission, I'd be all over that.
I know. Really let us down.
I, I know, Kathleen, John and you is counting on it here. Yeah, so, the financial and, and.
And the, it's okay for the Compensation Commission to review other, um, uh, commissions rather? Or is it just for the board compensation?
It's just elected.
Well, they can only rec, they can only do a determination for the salary. They can make recommendations for hourly, you can ignore that completely.
Yeah.
The rules don't apply to their recommendation on hourly or per meeting. I, I would make two suggestions. First, that you don't use just Jim Think in your, in your paperwork, because if he's not available, you might end up with another Think.
Yep.
As you did last in twenty twenty-three. And, and also that you change it to say Compensation Commission is gonna do salary of, salary for officers, and if they have time left, then they're gonna do the other. So that, because, you know, you guys were very efficient last time. I've worked with communities that are not that efficient, and I, and I, there, there could be the potential that they would run up against their fifteen-day deadline and only have worked on the committee question, which is not what they're tasked to do under the law.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
I'm editing the bottom motion. Thank you.
Should I give it a go? Should we give a revised motion a go?
Yep.
To assign Township Attorney Jim Think and Mariah Think and Human Resources Generalist Aurora Northrup as staff to the twenty twenty-five Compensation Commission, to direct the Compensation Commission to return with four separate determinations of compensation, one for each of the positions of clerk, supervisor, treasurer, and trustees, and to request that, if time allows, the Compensation Commission provide recommendations on the rate of pay and committees that are paid by other jurisdictions.
Could we, um, to assign Township Attorney Jim Think or Mariah Think, or just Township Attorney? That opens it up to whoever's available.
Sure, and/or Mariah, Jim and/or Mariah.
Or do we want both of them at the same time? Because if you say Jim and Mariah, it implies both of them.
Why don't you just say Think and Think?
Think of being the firm. Let's support that.
Okay, and at the, could you repeat at the, the end?
The end, yeah, let me try it again. To request that, if time allows, the Compensation Commission provide recommendations on the rate of pay and, let, let's restate that, sorry, recommendations on.
Not paper, paper.
On what, um.
What compensation?
Compensation, other jurisdictions. Other jurisdictions provide, um, committee or commission members. So we would really just be asking for any kind of survey data that they've done?
Okay, one more time, does that work, Judy?
Okay.
Because then we would vote, uh, what they bring back, then we would be.
It's just food for thought, as we're doing our budgeting process.
Okay.
Because we, we have reaffirmed these rates year over year over year without ever talking about them. So, that'll. So, that'll, we had the bandwidth to bring it up.
Are you presenting the motion?
Yes, I just made that motion.
Okay, and then.
Nice.
Support. Yeah, thanks for the word. Oh, by Ryan, sorry, I didn't hear you. Um, oh, I guess we can just do a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, none, motion passes. Uh, next one is J eight and, oh wait, no, I'm sorry, it's um J seven. Yeah, um, establish a committee to revise the rules of order of Board of Trustees, and this is presented by Clark Flintoff.
So just a simple idea, we have rules of order. Um, there's a lot more that can be done with them. I wanted to recommend that we establish a committee um to sit down a few times, get some proposed revisions, and bring it back to the Board for deliberation.
So you're recommending the Supervisor, Clerk, Attorney, and Office Coordinator as well as.
As well as anybody else who wants to, but I thought at minimum, um, I would recommend those four plus anybody else who's interested.
So Mariah and as long as you don't have too many trustees.
Right, right, no, but it'd be a committee established by the Board, so it'd be public, it'd be on.
I see, yeah. Okay, well, should this be just the whole Board?
Well, eventually, we'll have to adopt them as a board.
Yeah, yeah, I just thought, when we talked about it, we can, we can also do it as a committee of the whole or at a board meeting. It's just, there's so much, many different models and things. I think it would be helpful if a group came up, did some deliberation, and kind of came up with some recommendations.
What's your uh expected or requested timeframe, which I can feel for the urgency?
Or since, you know, later than.
I was thinking not later than a regular meeting of February twenty-fifth.
Good, to meet, but to make changes also?
No, to bring recommendations back to the Board.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have on your proposed agenda scheduled February eleventh, adoption of rules of order. Where, not to say you want.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so maybe, maybe it would be February twenty-fifth, that was just a placeholder, but
Okay, yeah, I get it.
But I was, I was kind of setting a goal, because we technically don't have rules of order right now, having just been seated.
Well, we do, we have all the other ones.
We do, um, Jim Fink has said multiple times that we need to adopt the rules again, so.
That's fine. Would, I, I, do you envision this would just be like minor revisions to our existing rules?
I think our current rules are a good basis. I think that I, I envision some significant revisions to incorporate um, like more sophisticated processes related to, say, ordinances, having first and second readings, um, our communication with committees, how things come to the Board, um, just like having better preparation, um, more um public noticing, um, things that our rules currently don't touch on. So I think I would think of it as kind of building from what we have, but improving them, because the first time around, we got some pretty bare bones rules, which is good, because we never had had any. But I think there's a lot more we could do to be more efficient. What do you envision?
I don't know, I'm just trying to understand what you're proposing, it, I mean, it's, I.
And we don't have to do anything, it just, I thought this was just one way to get the process going.
Has everybody read the rules of order recently?
Yeah, I printed them outside.
Well, and you're printing them.
I printed them.
You put them in file of everything else to read, okay, um.
I like the direction that you're suggesting.
Okay, but I think that, yeah, to have it, is we're, we're also, we have a lot on our plate with budget, you know, but if we, February twenty-fifth, bring it back to the Board.
It doesn't mean we'd have to adopt it, it would just be like proposed revisions to deliberate on, or can we?
Yeah, but if you're going to have a committee invest their time in it, I, I think we owe it to those individuals that we act on it.
Right.
Uh, otherwise, it goes on a shelf and.
Yeah, so what.
Right, I mean, yeah.
Wouldn't hijack it. Well, how, could we, could we extend the deadline to the end of March while?
Yeah, we can do whatever we want.
And then that way, we'll just keep the rules of order that we have now, you know, by, by them. But then this will give us more time, because it sounds like there's some other things that are not in rules of order that we're going to have to talk about and adopt or.
And the permanent manager, which ends up being all of us, those meetings that we've had, that, that has to take.
Yeah.
Priority, um, when we all meet for that, so. And we, and I think we want that to be a higher.
I guess, yeah.
So we could even begin the rules of order about, you know, either before or after, I think, what we're meeting at two o'clock generally for the manager. So if we met before, if that's possible, we have to look at our schedules.
Yeah, so you're proposing doing this as a committee of the whole?
Or um, maybe not as the whole, if we don't want to do that, but, you know, at least um leverage our time, because we're already here. Some of us are already here.
Already here, yeah. I just think, I think going through rules, we, we did that last time. I mean, going through rules as like an entire seven-member body, like, it is, it, it is, it is tough. Okay, and it is not efficient, and, and, and I think it will prolong things, so I'm just suggesting.
I will bow out for the good of the order.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm open to other ideas, I just, you know.
I defer.
I mean, you're, you're.
This is how my rules are.
You would be my idea.
John and I are the.
Idea, and I'm not volunteering other people, but I, here's what my thinking is. Um, with the timeline that would be proposed by either the item as presented or the item as suggested amended, I guess, I think it would be difficult for me to participate with all the other demands of my department.
You're in tax season.
So, that's why I, I would suggest, and Mr. Reiser has other commitments, that's fine. I was just, some of the others, just, but I'm not volunteering as.
He's looking at me.
I'm not volunteering, I'm not, I, I, I'm not suggesting anybody, but I, I'm just looking at everyone else that um, is not obligated to the same obligations I am, but has different obligations of their own that I don't know.
Based on the direction that Clark Flinton top is suggesting, I would work on that, because I think it's very valuable. I think it's worthwhile.
Okay, so Supervisor, Clerk.
And I need my own office trustee.
Absolutely, for this task. With that new equipment, new, that new.
We're going to build you your own building.
I said.
And a car.
And a car, and a building for your car.
Or, yes.
Yabba dabba di.
And.
I'll give you a five you.
So not the. Supervisor, Clerk, Office Coordinator, Attorney, and Trustee Brand, anyone else?
I'm going to wait, I don't want to commit yet.
Okay.
Thank you, my child.
Okay.
I, I'm, I'm thinking that we're going to look at other communities and try to.
Yeah.
Take some of their.
Hard work, yeah.
Yeah, I have a binder of them.
So I guess um Mariah or Jim would be helping us with this? And would, would the attorneys need to be present or as needed? Because if, if they need to be present, we need to work around their schedule as well.
Yeah, I mean, I was suggesting that the attorney be part of the committee, but we don't have to do that. We could just have, you know, the committee meet, it's just, I think that we don't want to get too far afield. I think our attorney would have a lot of valuable. I mean, I think, Mariah, I mean, most of the consultation, I mean, you know, it runs up against, you know, statute and process and stuff like that, so I think it'd be helpful, but we'll be efficient.
Tuesdays.
Okay.
Oh.
Great.
After the interview.
So the, the motion I would then make, unless there's other special.
No, it's fine.
The motion I would make is to establish a committee comprised of the Supervisor, Clerk, Attorney, Office Coordinator, and Trustee Brand to review and propose changes to rules of order and to return to the Board of Trustees with recommendations, recommendation for its consideration, not later than a regular meeting of March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five.
I would support them.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, none, motion passes. Okay, yeah, um, and I guess the rules of order says eleven o'clock.
Who wants, please, no, so. Are we going to follow our rules of order?
No, we just like having them on.
Naloxone.
Yeah, the naloxone policy.
Christie.
I wanted to, Judy emailed me and asked about fiscal cost.
Yep.
There is, is none.
There's none?
There's none.
Okay.
The naloxone you get from the MS, I put it in the, you know, it's, you get it from the state and then.
The HJ.
Yeah, thanks.
Yep.
That's it. And then the um vending machine, I will apply for it and it would be awarded, so.
Oh, like a grant or, or a rest or something like that?
And then that would, we would find that out in March, and if for some reason we didn't get some vending machine, I, we would just figure out another way to have the available. I mean, you could put it on the table if you wanted to. Simple as that, but.
Would the machine be here or at the fire station?
It would be here in the vestibule.
Okay. You know, I, I was curious about that also, John, I spoke to Chief to say, given our window when there's business hours, I asked if there was a potentially other location, and he said he didn't know of any either, because they're also locked up, um, and so is the Sheriff's Office. So that this was going to be as um good of a place as.
I, I, yeah.
As any, and um his only take, uh, advice was for it to be um, most useful is to really promote it, that's what he, he, he said.
Put it in the newsletter.
That was his ad- advice, because um, he says it works well and it's very effective, but promoting it, letting people know it's free.
Right.
And it's, it's as confidential as we can make it.
Right.
At vestibule.
I think too, um, you never know what families are going through.
Oh, mm hmm.
So it doesn't, you can have anybody walk in, and it may not be for them, it could be for someone in their family that they're going to keep on hand, just in case. I mean, I have very close friends whose children have been through it.
Mm hmm.
I think having some like, they have like standing signs, we might even have on the sign, I'm sure we have one somewhere here, right?
The sandwich board, you mean, or?
Like the little like counter signs, like you put pieces of paper in it.
Oh, we do, yeah, we've, we've got those.
Frankly, we should put it, if we end up getting in front of the tax season, we should put it up.
Sure.
Basically right up to the counter, and everybody looks at the lovely calendars that.
Oh, they, they pilfer through anything you said out there.
You put it up there before the, 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 they're going to be like, what is this?
They're going for it, so, yeah, absolutely, we would definitely.
Yeah, I want to thank you, Christie, for doing this, this is like, like a really good thing we're doing, and, and I'm really proud that we're doing this, so thank you for making it happen. I also want to say publicly and just please, um, work with them around it, like, we need to have training for staff. You know, we, you know, our basic, you know.
Yeah, the county said they would come over and do training too, but also the, our fire department.
Our fire department, but I also think even a, like, ten-minute training from County Health on heart reduction.
Yeah, County Health, actually, they were more eager to come over to do training than, um, try to find someone that would speak to them.
Yeah, because I, the, the last thing I want is for our staff to maybe be undertrained and anybody to, you know, encounter any sort of unnecessary, you know, judgment or inability to answer questions about what the initiatives are about.
I can set that up.
Awesome, thank you.
Mm hmm.
So I'm prepared to make the motion.
Go ahead.
I would make the motion to approve the township of Syle, they pronounce this naloxone?
Naloxone.
Naloxone vending machine policy.
Is there support?
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, none, motion passes. Ryan, do you want to take this one?
Sure, so Clark Flintoff and I worked on a cash handling and receipt process. Uh, it's based from Manor Cost Harrison. We have made, uh, so I don't know, three or four rounds audits, I think it told.
Yeah.
It was, we spent quite a bit of time on it, going back and forth through actual operation and sort of cleaning up language and verbiage, so it made sense for Syle Township. Uh, ultimately, it should help clarify who's responsible for what within each department, and we've got info from a number of different folks, so this time is ready for.
Yeah, and one of the major, this is the first um such policy we've had in Syle Township. Um, we did um rely on the um guidance from Maynor, um, but have changed a, a couple of things, um, and, and one major thing that's changed from our past practice is um, we, the treasurer, the treasurer is now receiving um and then depositing the money, and then the clerk is journalizing. But regardless of who's doing it, what we used to do is receipt, journalize, deposit. Now what we're doing is receiving, depositing, journalizing. Which is significant.
Yeah, great. And does this resolve the repeat audit deficiencies we've had?
It should in the, the audit of the year before last, the scathing one on cash handling.
Mm hmm.
Yes, that would completely resolve this. It will also assist in resolving the material weakness in bank recs, because a lot of the bank recs without goo- good um controls on the cash, the receipts, and the journal entries, because we had so many people receiving and journal entries and different things going on. And what would happen is there would be an error upfront with the cash, it would be journalized, it would be put into the general ledger, and we wouldn't find it until we were doing bank recs. And so then we were doing workarounds with our bank recs. So it solves both the bank rep finding and the cash handling finding. And, and Ryan and Joella.
It also solves any deposit that might have had an error. You're going to catch the deposit error at the time you're making the deposit, so you can see if a check stuck to another piece of paper.
Okay.
Or if the check, like, if there was a, like, you read somebody's number, the one looked like a nine, so you mistyped it. That, you could catch that deposit instead of catching it at a bank rep, so we'll do this later.
Right, and the deposits are also, the, the check that you're doing, checking the receipts to the deposit slip before taking the deposit, so eliminating those errors. Um.
What else changed, Ryan?
Oh, do you want to share a little bit about um the, this, this is a little different, but one thing you've done related to POs internally?
Oh, so we did have an issue where Rebecca was having people use the credit card to purchase different things on Amazon for different departments, and it involved, generally, once the credit card statement came and she was trying to tie out the end of the month, people had not entered a purchase order for their credit card purchase, so we couldn't locate what they bought on Amazon. So Christie and I would spend time with me reading her about some finding the Amazon receipts to print on. So we've now mandated Amazon to have a purchase order number entered before you can check out. And that way, as long as people are compliant with the process, they have to have the purchase order number entered from our software in B S and A before they could check out, and we don't have to track down receipts weeks later.
The, and then the other improvement here, this is an appendix, but we're having written assignment. This is the written assignment of who Ryan is empowering to do cash collections and receipts and whom I'm empowering to um journalize, which is a very small part of this process. But um, the positions are written down, and so then the permissions within B S and A can follow accordingly so that um there's never a question of who should be handling cash or receipts or making entries into our accounting records. Um, so we're going to take each. Um, so we're gonna take each process one by one.
Really good work. I appreciate this.
I, I appreciate that. It moved to the top of the list, um, and you guys have only been at it for less than. A month and. It was great.
You want someone to make the motion?
Sure. You wanna do it?
Yes, I would make the motion to adopt the Sio Township policy on cash handling. And receiving as proposed.
All in favor, say aye. Oppose? None. Motion passes.
Okay, the next item, just ten page.
This was prepared by Clerk Flintoff. Um, approval of contract with Tremore Ecology and Land Services.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed contract. Tremore Ecology and Land Services for a term of one year to authorize up to forty two thousand dollars a year. From Fund two, three, three, zero, 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 eight, two, three, for such purposes. Clear support?
All in support.
Are we ready to?
I just have a. Any discussion? So one just clarification, um, Mariah flagged for me that I had inadvertently included the wrong version. So this is the right version. Um, I'm not clear. On where the, the difference is, but are there significant differences the board should be aware of?
Yeah, the difference.
And I apologize. I thought I had the right one.
The difference is in the language about delivery of materials for the township.
Can you say, when you talk about this one, you're talking about the one that was distributed at the meeting, printed out at our table?
Yeah, that's the.
That's the new one.
Right.
The one that's in, that was in the packet is the one that I think.
Yeah, not, not the one that was on.
The one in the table replaces the one on. Right, and does the guy who's in the room, who's the subject of it, have this one as well?
It, this, it's the one that you and I worked on together.
Except the, the, the contract that we negotiated and that was endorsed by the L P C is a two-year contract.
Okay.
I have not seen a one-year contract.
This, this, there is not a one-year contract. This is the same contract. The, um, trustee is just recommending that it be approved for a one-year term. So there's no change to the documents that you and I looked at. Um, so the, the difference in what was posted online and what you have in your packet is. Um. Paragraph eight.
Okay.
That says, once the.
Yeah.
It's language, once the township has provided consultant with an electronic means of transfer of files, not email. Consultant will regularly, no less than monthly and timely, submit all information and original documents to the township clerk. Until the township has provided the electronic means of transfer, consultant will submit the requested documentation. Via external drive with his quarterly reporting.
USB, yeah, oh, that's great.
Well, I have a comment on just sort of that topic too. Um, it was pointed out in the L P C meeting astutely by Daryl Burkhart that. Um, the communications that occurs between the consultants and any other bodies. The records for those, um, they, they probably don't get to the township, so. Um. Could we not have the consultant use a township email address for all correspondence?
It was brought up. Sorry, that was brought up, um.
Earlier.
Earlier today. And what was that?
I don't think we're recommending that, but I think that's something that we could talk about at a later.
Okay, we could. I mean, we, the, the consultants that we do have township emails for are like our, um, our planner. Um, our finance director, so it's, it's certainly possible.
It would solve, it would solve, immediately solve any record retention for correspondence.
Well, any correspondence that the consultant is having with someone who is associated with Sio Township, we would have a record of.
Yeah, I don't know, what, what? Say that again?
Well, if, if he's emailing you at your Sio Township email, we have a record of that.
No, I mean, between the consultant and. Grantees or owners of property. We don't, we don't have that if it's not, if it's the consultant's email address.
Uh, Kathleen, would that be something we could or should address as. An overarching item with all consultants?
Well, I, I think we might consider doing it for committees, and the planning commission chair uses her business email.
Yeah, might have to be a, a, a policy that we apply across. Um, across the board. I think it's a really good point, across the board.
Could that be discussed during our rules of order?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not really.
Okay, or I T.
We, we can, but, but not here. It's a, it's a, it's a good point. I, I would say, Kathleen, paragraph eight though.
Right.
Um, talks about documents procured. I don't know that anything special about communications when we're talking about, you know, consulting. But all documents procured, drafted, assessments, appraisals, any of that, so. I mean, I think that.
If you think it's comprehensive on.
I, I think it does. I don't know.
But, but I do think as the, as an L C P or L P C member, um, that did come up. And it will continue to be reinforced on that kind of transfer of information. Um, your point in terms of communications, and I expect we will address that more there.
Why the change to one year rather than two years for the duration?
Um, a, a couple of, of reasons, um, because I, um. I, I actually have thought through, uh, this extensively. Um, the, the first thing is, is. The difference between one year and two years will not at all be an obstacle or impede. Current activity or impede any activity that we've got going on. Um, but it's consistent with what we've been doing in the last month, which is. Um, revisiting things, um, I, and, um, it's consistent with. Um, good governance, that it's been a program that's been in place nineteen years. And has spent millions of our dollars, um, and other government dollars, and it's never been. Reviewed, it's never been, um, visited. And so I would, uh, like to see in this next twelve months, uh, not, uh, additional. Um, um, what I would call good governance, transparency. The kinds of things that this board has demonstrated a commitment to. And, um, what I'd like to do is, um, and. We, we've just always called it, um, a review. Of, um, instead of a R F P, you do a review for our, um. Um, also for review, you just look at it, you look at fiscal responsibility. You check for alignment. Are you still in alignment with the village? Um, are you in alignment with the residents? I mean, one of the key things that. We ran on and heard is residence or residents, and so making sure we're in alignment. Um, making sure, um, our consultant and the commission is in alignment with the village. Um, and, um, I'd like to do a swat on the initiative so that we can really get at. Um, the program and deliver the most to the residents, um. I, I think by all accounts, it's been successful and well-liked. Um, so it's, it's, it's actually trying to address nineteen years of a program that has never been. Um, reviewed and drilled down on it. Um, and, and so that would be for a, for a review, because it will not stop the pro. The, really the momentum that we've got going on. If it was going to stop momentum. Um, I'd have, uh, you, you know, I'd have a different opinion on it. The other thing is, at the L, uh, P C meeting, a couple of things came up and, um, uh. One is, um, I, I wrote these down, is that both Liz and Lisa were commenting. And presented an idea to us that they wanted a more of a strategic work session. So one of their things was, oh, it's about time to have, um, not about time, it's like we need a strategic work session. Um, that told me that even they're thinking about some deeper look at it. Um, another one is, uh, Janine had asked for more collaboration. With other groups, so that's another area to pour down on is more collaboration. Um, Tim talked about a more understanding of resources, because I had tossed out about. What we, um, hold our, our consultant to doing and maybe resources we have here. That can do some of those things. Not the front-facing things, not going after grants, but some of the audits maybe. Um, some of the, um, back office things that we may have, that we did not have. Ten years ago or five years ago. We now have some resources that do it. Um, and then the last one is, um, David, uh, another new member, uh, David Reed. Um, he suggested an R F P. Um, R F P was not really embraced. Kind of understand, um, that, but an R F P, his idea behind it was. Um, that's what he thought was really important while he ran for it. Um, I know Kathleen has been an advocate for consultant reviews. Um, and, and so the idea is keep the momentum going. Don't stop that at all, embrace everything that we know is good about it, and then dig down and ask if we're still in alignment. On the program. I've done a lot of thought about this because I really like the program. Um, and I just wanna know that, um, I'm doing my due diligence. Um, I think we as a board are obligated to, um, do our due diligence. And that's why I want a one-year, so I can say it's been done. And a lot of it is done right now behind, um, closed sessions, um, and. That means it's our responsibility, solely our responsibility to do it. That's my, that's my take. So.
So I, I absolutely ran on a platform to, um. Try not to single source, single source, so at least you. Um, look at what resources are available. It's just to my core and that's what I committed to people. That we should not be single sourcing. I mean, you may come up with the exact same determination.
Agree, but you have to look at.
So this, um, agreement presented to us does have a period of two years, so how do we?
We just cross it out and initial it. It's as simple as crossing out and initial it. That's how you do contract.
You, you, you still have to get approval of the other party.
Yes.
So should we?
This is a.
Table this until, no?
I, I don't think so. I mean.
No, I mean, I, the L P C has, has wanted to move this forward, um, since before the election. And, and it, it kinda came, came to light that this was, you know, being recommended. I talked to Liz. Um, we had a, a meeting of L P C co-chairs and staff and Raya to kinda talk about, um. Wanted to talk about a lot of things that I think we all see that we can be more strategic. Communicate better, support the L P C better, you know, really work as kind of one team, and I know that we're all kind of. You know, we've grown a lot as a township and we had a few committees. It's not just with the L P C. There's this dynamic. Where, you know, from a board perspective, you know, there's a ton of work going on. And, and, and I can, I, as a board member for five years, you know, sometimes I'm like, hey. I should know more about that and I don't, you know, and it can feel unsettling when we're making decisions on things. So I do think that on the workflow, you know, there's more, more we can do because you have a board who's super supportive and wanna leverage resources. And I wanna get, have the D D A stop capturing it, and like, you know, I mean, there's lots we can do. Um, but I do think it's important that we act on this, um, consultant agreement tonight. Um, I would note that it can be terminated by either party with thirty days written notice. So I'd say from a practical point of view, um, this is very similar to where we were at with the Carlisle-Wartman contract. When I said, hey, we wanna, you know, R F P this out, right, but we hadn't done the R F P. We, we started with O H M and Carlisle is having. No, actually, O H M, we still don't have a contract. Carlisle, we didn't, so let's just put that out there. We don't have a contract with O H M. Um, we didn't have a contract with Carlisle-Wartman until we got one. But we did it with no bid, but that was a step. Um, and I think what we have here is, is, um, a, a contractor who's been. Um, you know, our, we, we haven't, haven't bitted out, we might want to. I'm just saying if we do one year or two years. It doesn't preclude us from making that, um.
And the, the motion is not at all about R F Ping, it's, it's.
Or a review.
Or review, it's, it's saying one year. I, I mean, that's, the motion I made is for one year. Um, and, and you think it doesn't.
And what would you anticipate we would do as we're kind of nearing the end of that year?
Oh, oh, we would be.
In terms of like analysis or, or.
Oh, we wouldn't, I, I don't envision us getting near, um, like at the end. I would say. Um, given what the folks shared, um, at the L P C meeting. We would do a review of, um. The strategic view, where the properties are, because they wanna do more strategic planning.
Right.
Around where are these properties, prioritizing those properties. And getting a better, um, communication with the board of trustees. Earlier in the process.
Absolutely.
So that, um, they're working on prioritized list. And we're sharing that priority list with the board of trustees. So they can weigh in on property prioritization.
Right.
Before the purchase order comes or purchasing agreement comes to board of trustees. And all you have a chance to look at is that one property.
Right.
And that one.
And it's all but done.
And it's all been done. At that point, you only have one choice.
Right.
Vote against it or vote for it.
Right, right.
So it really is working through what they've actually even already brought up. Um, for example, is, is understanding where are these properties and do we own them?
Right.
And, and are they now parks or are we, are we just accumulating property? Are we just conserving property? Um, how have we done a distribution, a pie chart of, we've spent X amount of million dollars. Do we now have conservation? Do we have access to more acreage? Um, and how does it fit in with the place?
Right.
So, um, the collaboration then with parks and pathways.
Right.
And access, more access or less access to our residents. Um, how does this fit in with making more property available to our residents? And all of that would be, um, really driven through L P C. And then we would report back. I see what it's doing is reporting back to the board of trustees on. You know, this is what our indexes look like. This is, this is what this program has done. And putting that more out there on the web, uh, on, on our website that says, wow. This is what all your money has done. And, and it's all about meaning what you guys have done, um, and, and letting them. You don't feel really good about this program.
Right.
Um, and what's been done.
I, I like the idea of collaboration, um, with the board because. In the past four years, I've seen property that was changed in the master plan. That was high value targeted by L P C and they. Did had not have knowledge, visibility, didn't have an avenue to try to change somebody's mind.
That was one of my, my, my points I didn't add is asking those questions about. Cross-referencing the master plan. cross referencing the master plan, PPP, residents and the village, trying to get alignment. I believe the commission is ready for that and wants to do that. This is just a driving force.
That's to do it. Yeah. So going back to the agenda item, this is great and it's, it's going to be a more further conversation, but could we go back to?
The motion is on the table.
Yes.
And I'll send it along.
John already did.
Oh, I mean.
So we didn't.
I don't like.
We each had 20 minutes over.
I just want to vote on it.
So this would be a roll call vote because it is a contract. Oh, and then we need to, to actually change the model motion if, because it says for a term of two years or for a term of one year.
And I just said for a term of one year.
So just basically what you would be doing is you would be making a counter proposal.
Okay.
Because you can't unilaterally change it to one year. So you would be making a counter proposal to your consultant that this agreement would be for a term of one year.
That you would then communicate.
Well, he's right here.
So it is a proposed contract. So the model motion, just I think it says what you intend. Because I don't know that it's actually a counter proposal until we make a proposal. So it's a proposed contract.
Well, okay.
I mean, however you want to say it is fine.
I, I think that the last communication that Mr. Lonik and I had, that we had an agreement that you were going to approve tonight. And now you're changing that agreement. So we're, we're asking him to revisit.
Okay. So the motion would be to approve. How would you characterize this?
You, I would say the motion would be to propose this consulting agreement on a one-year term. And if acceptable to the consultant, authorize the clerk and the supervisor to sign.
Okay.
Were you still with this dollar amount in there though? Or I mean, I have no problem.
Yeah.
With a not to exceed?
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with that amount.
Okay.
So it would be to propose the contract with Treemore Ecology and Land Services for a term of one year and to authorize up to $42,000 a year from 233-000-823 for such purpose.
Authorize the clerk and the supervisor. If the consultant agrees to the change, authorize the clerk and supervisor to execute the contract. So you don't have to bring it back.
Okay. So and if consultant agrees, signs?
Agrees?
He agrees. Agrees, authorize supervisor and clerk to sign. Okay. You were going to ask Barry. Barry, could you come up please? Come up to the, yeah. You're so far away.
Hi Barry.
But just in case you didn't hear.
You might want to give him some time to think about that.
Yeah, I think.
Unless you want to be honest.
No, I have some time to think about it. Sure.
Okay, so you'll let us know when?
You, you still have to vote on the motion. You still have to vote on the motion, then, and then we'll send it over.
Okay.
Yeah, the revised contract.
Yep.
I'll review.
Yep, review it and then. All right, could you, so this is an amended motion. Could you repeat that please?
Sure. A motion by Monk, support by Ryser to propose the contract with Treemore Ecology and Land Services for a term of one year and to authorize up to $42,000 a year from 233-000-823 for such purpose. And if the consultants agrees, authorize the supervisor and clerk to sign.
Is there support?
I would second it again.
This is, well, this is a friendly amendment.
Yeah.
So we don't have to, okay.
Any change to the damage.
Ryser agrees.
That's Ryser.
Okay. Roll call vote. Lynn Tought, yes. Brian?
Yes.
Monk?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Ryser?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Yable?
Yes.
Motion adopted seven zero. Okay. And I ran on a platform that our meetings would go past 11 o'clock. But with, so the L1 has been removed, table for now. And then, yes, Brian?
Thank you.
Okay. And we'll do public comment first, go into closed session and then adjourn. Public comment? Yeah. Anyone in present here would like to speak during public comment?
Anybody online, please raise your hand. Hi, Rob.
Hi gang, Rob Pattinson. Your item that you just discussed really does two things. On one hand, it is totally in line with the new policy of Sciop Township to be more transparent and to put things out to quote RFPs. And that is completely valid. The other thing it does is rather redundant. First of all, I have to disclose that I'm extremely biased in favor of Barry Lonik. He has, I've watched in LPC meetings where he's taking Sciop Township dollars and multiplying them two times, three times, four times for protecting land in Sciop Township. And while putting it out to quote next year is perfectly valid, I, I cannot see another contractor have the resources, the history, the knowledge and the skill of Barry Lonik to serve Sciop Township. So like I said, as, as valid as the discussion was, in this particular case, I think it's rather redundant because Barry is so good at what he does. I would also like to say, congratulations, Ryan Yable. We got our taxes last Wednesday. So that's 21 days into the new term. We got our taxes, which means that you met the December 1st deadline of having them prepared in 10 days. And then the vendor got the taxes out to us in 11 days. So very well done. Congratulations. And great meeting. I really appreciated the depth of the discussion you went into tonight. You spent three hours discussing the capital improvement plan. And it was in depth and it looks like we are in good shape moving forward. This is great progress. Well done, everyone.
Thanks, Rob. Pam?
Hi Pam.
Jim Boyd, a Sciop resident, a couple of comments. Well done on the CIP. I, I can't remember a previous meeting where it was so laid out, well, laid out as well as it, as it was. And it was very easy to follow. I crossed out, because I wrote this earlier, thank you for a shorter meeting. I, I, I think I traumatized my husband, who's kind of the de facto chair of the Compensation Commission. I said, hey, you need to come in and say a public comment, but the meetings have gone really short. You'll be fine. Listening to the utilities employees complaints five years ago to what we're looking at today with Brandon's, under Brandon, is night and day. And I just want to thank Brandon for all the work that he's doing. And it's a tough job. He's had to come up to speed with a lot of issues that were poorly done in the past. And there's a long road to go yet. So I, I just, yeah. And excellent on the cash, Ryan. Excellent, excellent. And Jess, it, it's, it was such refreshing to see that. As a resident, I would like to ask, what is Priority Waste's promise or written standard of their, of doing business? So if you'll indulge me for a second, a company's should have a mission statement. And looking at priority, Priority Waste says, provides reliable and cost efficient residential waste collection. Our team is committed to providing you with the best customer service in Michigan. Well, I think they've got some problems. And I would like to know exactly what their mission statement is. And I would like you to hold them to that mission statement. Or, or get, or get the penalties going. This is ridiculous. It's ridiculous. So, thank you, and I look forward, and the last thing, the reason why I came in, in person was to finish out this calendar year with the last five years of coming to meetings. It is a joy to listen to you guys deliberate, discuss. And yeah, I, I just, I wanted to end the year being here in person. So thank you all very much.
Anyone else present?
I just wanted to note that we're going to go into closed session. And you mentioned we're going to go into a closed session and adjourn, but actually will be a motion the board consider after the closed session.
Most likely, yeah.
We're not going to just come out and adjourn. There will be an action in a, in a public session.
Yeah, yeah, good point. Yeah. Yeah, just no other item, no, no other items after that. Yep.
Anyone else online?
There's no more public comment.
Okay.
All right.
And let's.
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session to discuss the purchase of land pursuant to MCL 15.268 subsection D.
Or by Ryser?
We're going to stay here or move?
We need a roll call.
Roll call?
Yeah. Yes.
Lynn Tought, yes. Brian?
Yes.
Monk?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Ryser?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Yable?
Yes.
Motion adopted seven zero. The board is entering closed session at 11:22 PM. We're going to get up? No, we're going to stay here. We're going to.
Oh, I thought we were going to the other room.
In order to be secure, you have to go to the other room.
It's just cleaner if we go to the other room.
Staff was here in the last one. Okay, good, good. Yeah.
I hope that's why. Kathleen, do you want this?
Sorry?
Do you want this thing?
Yeah.
I would think it's something in 10, 11 years, maybe emails, distributionless.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Power rushing things.
We're going to get up?
You're like your jacket on.
No, exhausted. It's like Florida agendas. We're going to talk about this tomorrow. Okay, we need to have everybody back in here. I'd like to make a motion to return to open session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Open session at eleven forty-three P.M. Okay, so. Somebody proposed the motion for this agenda item.
Sure.
I'm happy to.
Okay.
To authorize the township supervisor and township clerk to sign the closing documents and to authorize an amount not to exceed one hundred eighty-six one thirty.
Right?
It's.
No.
It's one thirty very closely.
I know.
Wait.
One hundred eighty-six. One hundred eighty-six thousand one hundred and thirty for conservation purchase and not to exceed five thousand dollars in closing costs from the Open Space Fund.
Support?
Roll call vote. Vote, please.
Okay. Lynn Talked, yes. Brand?
Yes.
Monk?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Yapo?
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
Motion to adjourn. Board?
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned eleven forty-four.
Okay. Thanks so much, everybody.
Thank you, Carol and Lynn, for coming and caring. Stan?
Yes.